Well, welcome, everybody. I am going to call the meeting to order. We start our meetings with an invocation, which we observe by a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of Switzerland, one nation under God, indivisible, as one unity in Christ Jesus Christ. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Corliss.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Thed.
Here.
Willis.
Here.
All present. And we have some minutes for approval.
Madam, may I move approval of the minutes for the noon meeting on April 22nd, 2025?
Second.
We have a motion and a second clerk?
Hallie Burton.
Epstein.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Thed.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And we have a couple of things under special business today. Is Chad Slichter here? We have an, I have an appointment.
In the box.
Madam, ma'am.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I looked down too quickly. I'm so glad you're here. Welcome. Um, we, I, we have an appointment. I have a proposal that we appoint Chad Slichter to the Building Code Board for a four-year term.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the appointment of Chad Slichter to the Building Code Board for a term ending April 30th, 2029.
Without objection. Chad, you are official now. Thank you so much for your willingness to volunteer. Oh, and you have a whole group to celebrate today. This is great. You're here. Do you want to say anything? Nope. Well, thank you for your service. Really appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, if I could, he's not off the hook quite yet. One, you don't get such a big round of applause at all these meetings. Luckily, you've got a big group of folks here, so that's extra fun. But these are volunteer positions. They're relatively thankless positions, but they're positions that make a difference at the city because it's somebody bringing their expertise to the table. And it really helps guide our decisions up here on City Council as well. And so whenever anybody's volunteering, I just want to thank them especially for doing that. You don't have to. It may not necessarily bring you any sort of like extra joy or wealth, but it is service to your community. And I do think that that has tremendous value for all of us. And thank you. So again, thanks for jumping into this position.
Thanks, Chad. Really appreciate it. And now we have a special event on our agenda. It's a proclamation related to our sister city, Guernica Lumo, naming this Guernica Lumo Day. I wanted to say a couple of things. It's so wonderful to have all of you here. And I'm sorry I couldn't say hi to everybody. I didn't realize when I started saying hello that everybody in this section was here for this, and I had to stop. But I, I really appreciate that you're here. And I want to say that I'm honored to celebrate our sister city relationship with the Basque city of Guernica. It's a bond that was established between the two cities over 30 years ago to foster international understanding and to enrich our communities. And in light of this year's Hialdi celebration, which we're also excited about, it's coming back after 10 years, to welcome and celebrate the Basque people here in Boise, this proclamation stands as a testament to the vibrant cultural change that strengthens the ties between our cities. And we're so looking forward to welcoming city officials and others from the Basque country this summer. But while we celebrate this bond, we also must remember the pain and devastation of the aerial bombing of Guernica on April 26, 1937. We remember the victims, honor the survivors and their descendants, many of whom are here tonight. Thank you for being with us. And we acknowledge the immense bravery you and your families demonstrated in the face of such destruction. And in coming here, you demonstrated the resilience, and your resilience stands as a powerful symbol in the ongoing fight for freedom, security, and peace, values that our sister city relationship aims to protect and to promote across the globe. And so I want, I welcome you, all of you that are here. I'm going to read the proclamation. And then after I've read it, we have a couple to hand over. One, for Juana Gronio, the mayor of Guernica. Gloria is delivering a copy of the proclamation and a letter that I've written to him when she heads back to the Basque country sometime this week. And we have others for you to take, to have within your community that we'll share after. And with that, whereas the city of Boise incorporated in 1864, and the Basque country villa of Guernica Lumo, Guernica established in 1366 and joined with Lumo in 1882, entered into a sister city agreement on October 24th, 1993, by vote of their respective city councils to establish and maintain historical, institutional, cultural, educational, and tourism ties. And whereas both cities have benefited from outmigration and immigration of their respective residents living, conducting business, being educated, and visiting and returning to each other's areas. And whereas each year, both populations recognize the commemoration of the horrific fascist Axis Strafe incendiary bombing of civilians on Monday Market Day in Guernica Lumo and the surrounding area on April 26, 1937, during the Spanish Civil War, that killed thousands and destroyed homes, farms, businesses, and infrastructure of the Biscayan towns, causing war refugees and orphaned children to seek asylum around the world, including here in Idaho. And whereas we have with us today, living survivors of that bombing and their direct descendants, and the city of Boise recognizes their individual and family, personal suffering, and their, as well as their own, and the villa of Guernica Lumo's ongoing commitment to peace initiatives and education. And whereas we commemorate the April 26th anniversary of the bombing of Guernica Lumo, and do salute the villa's institutions and its people, as well as the Basque Americans living here in Boise and in the Boise area for their joint efforts to maintain the history of relations and culture, and the ongoing development of Guernica Luma, Lumo, excuse me, as a city center of peace studies, and our strong ties with each other. Now therefore, I alarm, proclaim Mayor Boise, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2025, as Sister City Guernica Lumo Day in the city of Boise. Do you guys want to join me for picture? So now we have the council, and I will present you the proclamations, and we have some flowers for Gloria's mom, right? Yep. So I should say, on my way down, we have with us Mari Carmen, I'm sorry, Edgarola. Um, yeah. And I'm going to present you some flowers as the, the survivor, the living survivor of the bombing of Guernica Lumo who's with us tonight. It's really an honor that you're here. I'm so glad that you could join us.
I'll welcome you.
Madam Mayor, I'm just going to take the mic real quick before everybody takes off. So before everybody leaves, there's a chance a couple of other council members might just have a couple of words to say. I'll kick it off if you need to think of any. But I've been on City Council for six years, and we get to celebrate some of our different sister cities. And it's such a fun thing to celebrate because it's such a good reminder that no matter where we are, no matter where we live, that we have connections somewhere else. And sometimes those connections are friends, sometimes they're family members, sometimes they're values. Sometimes it's just a common belief in humanity. And this is one of the things that I love about our Basque population in Boise. I'm a Boise boy, so I've grown up encountering our Basque population my entire life, and it's something that I feel really lucky for. And the sister city announcement, again, I think during a time when we can think about a lot of things that divide a lot of people, it's just such a great reminder of how connected we really are, even when we're, you know, on the other side of an ocean or across the country in different places. So again, thank you all for taking the time to be here today, and I join in the celebration with you. Thank you.
Madam, Madam Mayor, I'll just quickly add that this is, this is such a special evening to me. I feel so blessed that we have such a turnout for this special recognition. I was very lucky to take a personal vacation with my family to Spain in October and got to visit Guernica and got to visit the Peace Museum. And I really, it so strengthened my appreciation for this relationship that we have, the connections that Councilmember Hallie Burton mentioned. And I'm, I'm so grateful to be able to recognize this with you all tonight. Thank you so much for being here.
Madam Mayor, I just want to echo, first of all, thank you for coming. My visit to the Basque country has been the only place in the world where everybody I knew, or everybody I introduced myself to, actually knew where Boise was. I did not have to explain anything about Boise, and it was really remarkable, too, because we knew similar people. Like, the degrees of separation was like two. And so I really enjoyed it. And like Councilmember said, I went to the Peace Museum, and it was so insightful and so touching. And I feel so honored to have met someone who was there. I mean, I, it was really a pivotal point in how I understood the Spanish-American moral. I'd seen the plaques and certainly in the Basque block, but I didn't really understand until I was there. So thank you for sharing. Thank you for coming. And I just love the fact that no matter where you go in the Basque country, everybody knows where Boise is.
Well, thank you all so much. I do want to say, enjoy your evening. This was really an honor to do. Gloria, please send our love and welcome to the mayor and the council at Guernica. Look forward to celebrating with all of you this summer. And thanks so much for being here. Alrighty. Now we have a revised reason statement. Welcome, Josh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. On April 15th, City Council heard an appeal of design review case DRH 24-00348 on Boise Avenue. Ultimately, council voted to deny the appeal. In your packet tonight is a reasoned statement that staff has prepared, which outlines the discussion that evening and the reasons for the decision. We would ask for your approval of that tonight. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor, before that happens, I'm going to recuse myself from this when I wasn't here, in the same reason I recuse myself from the minutes.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Josh, generally, we see these on our agenda when council has taken action that might have been counter to a lower body. Could you, is this something we could expect going forward? And could you kind of give us an understanding of why we'd be doing a reasoned statement on, when we've agreed with the staff and a lower body?
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, Council President Nash, we feel that it is important, especially on appeals, to capture the decision and reasons for the decision accurately and thoroughly. They won't always be this long. There was some complex issues discussed that night that we felt were important to really thoroughly explore and make sure that they were written down. But yes, we do feel that it is important moving forward, even if council acts in a way consistent with the lower body, that the reason for the decision that is thorough and accurately reflects what happened that evening, strengthens our approvals and strengthens our process.
All right. Thank you. Madam Mayor. I move adoption of the revised reason statement of DRH 24-348, and ask that the records show that it accurately reflects the discussion and decision by council.
Second.
We have a motion and second discussion?
And Madam Mayor, just, oh, sorry. As a practice, I voted in favor of the appeal, so I will be voting now.
All right. Thanks, Clerk.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Thed.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes. No.
Corliss.
Yes.
For in favor, one opposed, motion carries.
Well, luckily, you said how you're going to vote to begin with, so I think she had you. Yeah.
Classic flip flop.
All right. All right. We will move into ordinances. Looks like we've got one on second reading.
Madam Mayor, can we do the consent?
Sorry about that. Consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and second clerk?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Thed.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right. And now second reading.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on second reading be read by number and title only and filed for the third reading calendar.
Without objection.
OID-15-25, an ordinance, CAR 24-14, for property located at 10100 West Overland Road, amending zoning classifications of the city of Boise City to change the classification of your property, particularly described in Section 1 of this ordinance and adjacent rights of way for R-2/DA residential compacted development agreement, TEC-MEX-2/DA mixed-use general development agreement, setting forth a reasoned statement in support of zone change and providing effective date.
All right. And that's it for ordinances. So we are going to move into the public hearing section of the evening. First up, we have ZOA 25-2. So we have Deanna coming up to, is it just you, Deanna, this evening? Oh, no, Andrea as well. So we've got Deanna and Andrea is presenting for the city because the applicant is the city. Are there any neighborhood association here tonight? Oh, great. Hi, I didn't see you. So two of you will be speaking. We'll take neighborhood associations. Anybody online that's a neighborhood association? If, will you just ask folks if they're neighborhood associations to raise your hands? Because what we'll do is we'll go through neighborhood associations first, and then I'll take folks that signed up in advance, and then go through the list that we have next.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm here today to present ZOA 25-2, an amendment to the Boise City-
Deanna, I'm gonna probably want to put it underneath you because-
Okay, there we go.
Better?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. I'm here to present ZO, ZOA 25-2, an amendment to Boise City Code, Common Procedures for Appeals and Specific Procedures for Conditional Use Permits. As the application before you is a zoning ordinance amendment, it has already received a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the City Council is the final decision-making authority. The approval criteria for this application is, one, the amendment is required for the public convenience or general welfare. And, two, the amendment is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan. As background for this city-initiated zoning ordinance amendment, following the Idaho Supreme Court decision, this council directed staff at a February 2025 work session to review and propose amendments to the appeal procedures and standards of review. The amendments before you proposed the following. First, we addressed several code inconsistencies and clarified procedural language related to appeals. We then amended the Appeals of Commission Decision section to more accurately describe the process of appeals for commission decisions. The next two describe policy changes informed by the Idaho Supreme Court decision, which will be discussed in more detail throughout the presentation. But they are to refine the arbitrary and capricious standard and introduce de novo review for appeals of conditional use permits. We amended the arbitrary and capricious standard to align with a more contemporary standard. This balances the deference that the council must give to a commission decision when reviewing an appeal. Additionally, we are proposing to introduce de novo review for conditional use permit appeals. This amendment will ensure that the City Council has the opportunity to fully reexamine the project, not just review the prior decision. De novo review of conditional use permits does not mean City Council will disregard the thoughtful deliberation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It means that City Council will be able to build on and develop a more robust record. It gives City Council the opportunity to consider the commission decision as one made by a technical body, but also allows council to accept new evidence, public testimony and staff analysis, ask questions and explore topics brought up through the commission hearing process, apply the approval criteria for conditional use permits, and add conditions to mitigate any negative impacts. With this amendment, City Council, as the elected body, is in a position to be accountable for difficult land use decisions that have far-reaching community impacts. Introducing de novo review for appeals of conditional use permits does not grant City Council unlimited discretion. The council will still be held to the rules of the Development Code and must find that the application before them meets the approval criteria for conditional use permits, meaning it addresses the site locations, public benefit, negative impacts, and compliance with the comprehensive plan. The introduction of de novo review is consistent with procedures of other jurisdictions in Idaho. These include Meridian, Pocatello, Idaho Falls, Kuna, Ada County, and Blaine County. However, Caldwell, Nampa, and Haley explicitly enforce an error standard for the review of appeals. Notably, in the city of Eagle, City Council has the final decision-making authority for CUPs, with the commission only providing a recommendation. We presented this amendment at the Planning and Zoning Commission on April 7. After a staff, staff presentation, questions, public testimony, and a failed motion recommending denial, the commission unanimously recommended approval, along with a recommendation to complete a review of the entire zoning code before the end of the calendar year. Since the submission of the ZOA application and the commission meeting, we have received public comment. Many of the comments exclusively focus on the introduction of de novo review for appeals of conditional use permits. These concerns were detailed in the project report and largely focused on preserving the commission's, commission's technical role and the perception that this amendment benefits a specific application. We appreciate the public's engagement and want to acknowledge the concerns they raised. Staff understands the belief that conditional use permits should be reviewed by technical experts. However, de novo review does not remove that expertise from the process. It builds upon it by allowing City Council to consider that as a technical foundation alongside broader policy, context, and community input. The intent is not to undermine commission's role, but to ensure that the elected body can fully evaluate complex and contested cases. We understand concerns about efficiency and the potential for more appeals, but our priority is making the best decision for the community. And finally, while some have questioned the timing of this proposal, this change is about strengthening the process citywide, which would apply to all CUPs, which would apply to appeals of all CUP. The application before the council is a zoning ordinance amendment with the following approval criteria. The, the amendment is required for the public convenience and general welfare because de novo review for CUP appeals appropriately elevates the appeal decision to those who have been elected by the residents to make difficult choices and are responsible for implementing the city's comprehensive plan. And the corrections included in this amendment improve code consistency and application. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the zoning ordinance amendment, and staff recommended adoption of the reasoned statement as detailed in the April 25th Lake Correspondent memo. The motion before the council is the decision on the application and the reasoned statement.
Madam Mayor, can you kick us off with some questions? If that's where we're at. So maybe just one, we'll call a softball, just some clarification on the arbitrary and capricious. So you showed us what the new language is. It's really the same language as the old language, but it's missing. There was a sentence that was at the end that we got rid of. What was, can you just read out that, the sentence that we removed and why we removed it?
So the decision is arbitrary, and I'll move to this slide. So we're keeping this part, "The decision is arbitrary, capricious, or an abusive discretion in that it was made without rational bias or in disregard of the facts and circumstances presented. Even if the record, memorandum, responses, and testimony would support two different interpretations of what this code and applicable state and federal law requires, the action is not arbitrary and capricious if exercised honestly and after due consideration." And our, our review of this is that this is not a contemporary, that second sentence is not really represented in contemporary case law. It's a unusually high, high bar to meet that isn't typically included in arbitrary and capricious standards moving forward.
Yeah, I did a little bit of research on the side, and I didn't see a lot of other cities that had that additional part. But almost every city I saw had something like this revised standard that we're seeing right here. Is that correct?
To the best of my knowledge.
Yep. Okay. All right. So that makes, that makes sense to me. My second question, I think, is probably related to more what most people are here for tonight to talk about. And it's the change in this process. And I think that it may feel like a major change. To me, it doesn't seem like a major change. It seems kind of like a small change. I've been on council for a while. And typically, when we'll have an appeal come this way, especially when Councilmember Clegg was here, you would always see some additional conditions be put on those appeals. And so that was a pretty normal process for us. We were hearing something to the public, usually generated through a variety of questions. And so we would put some conditions, some additional ones on there to solve some of those additional concerns. And in some cases, I would read through the transcripts, and our planning and zoning staff would actually ask us to look into more of those. Not our staff, but the commission itself, they would say, we don't feel comfortable coming up with conditions. This is more of a policy decision for city council. And sure enough, you know, somebody on city council, you know, would put that condition on there. What seems like the major change to me is, this is where I'm looking for some clarification, is the big deal is the way that the Supreme Court ruled in that we no longer can do that. And they tried to make it pretty clear that like, it would not be appropriate for council to be asking additional questions that might lead to some additional conditions that might make a application stronger or address some of those concerns. And so while it is a big change, and there are some small changes in some aspects, it's also sort of consistent with the way that we've heard a lot of things in the past. Am I kind of getting the gist of that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, your description of what has happened previously, correct? And I think that the Supreme Court decision did give us the opportunity and very clearly said, you need to make sure that your council is following your code to the T. And so we need to make sure that our code represents the ways that we want to be able to approach appeals of applications.
Yeah, and my understanding is that at that point, up until that point, we really thought that we were following it to a T, and that was within our discretion. And then what we learned is that the Supreme Court's interpretation is that that is absolutely no longer in our discretion, and they made that abundantly clear. So what we thought we were doing correctly, or what may have been interpreted correctly from a past Supreme Court, was no longer interpreted that way from this current one. And so they're saying either you need to stop doing this, or you need to make some changes.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, I agree.
Okay, that's helpful for me because it is a little confusing because I, you know, I have been here for so many decisions that we've made before in the past, where I felt like we put good conditions onto an application where there were a lot of people who were bringing up concerns. Sometimes it was a canal pathway, sometimes it was a tree, sometimes it was an intersection, sometimes it was a crosswalk or a sidewalk or a variety, these different things here that weren't necessarily solved the first time around, but council was able to hit them the second time around. And so that makes sense that like, now that we don't have the ability to put those conditions on here, why there's potentially a loss or a need for an actual code change to get back to an ability where we can make those applications stronger. So I appreciate that clarification.
Madam Mayor, I have a couple of questions too. Can you, Deanna, can you? I know that in a lot of the written testimony and from the planning and zoning meeting that the material I reviewed, there was a lot of talk about the, the annual review that is due on the, on the code. And I know that was originally delayed because of some staffing changes. But I also know that's something that we've been working on the last few months, and I don't think that had been communicated out to the public when the Planning and Zoning Commission had met. So can you let us know about the timeline and next steps? Because is it, I think that maybe the commission is hearing just next week or next month, those, that code word, that in-depth audit that we had promised to the public.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Protem said, yes. So we actually immediately after that had a planning and zoning work session meeting in which we gave them the same presentation that we gave you all in February, which was the one-year data review, where we showed them kind of some of the early, early trends, but really left with, it's pretty early to create, to pull any substantive trends in how the zoning code is working, and then prep them with how we're choosing to take a continuous improvements edit forward to them, and that will be at Planning and Zoning on May fifth. And that continuous improvements really being within the purview of improving the effectiveness of the code as it's written now in terms of business processes, consistency, really small or minor improvements to the code. So we followed up with them, and we'll be presenting that to them on Monday.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have another question. There was also a lot of testimony about the expertise of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I was appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission in twenty eighteen, I think. And at the time, I was the marketing director at Bally Idaho, but a very passionate and enthusiastic community member who had curiosity for city process, but certainly no expertise in land use. And I wondered if any of that criteria, I served for six years, but it's been some time. Is there any new criteria that requires them or expects them to be planning experts?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Protem said, it is very similar requirements. Again, it's interest and lived experience in land use, which all residents of Boise are going to have a lived experience in land use. And so really that dedication and interest and willingness to learn the topic.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thanks. Nice to see you. I just want to make sure for clarity's sake and for transparency's sake, is there anything else in this change that is, that doesn't have to do with the C U P process?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, there are small clarifications within the red line that just improve typos. There's pieces we made more clear, that's this, I'll go to this one. So the first two bullets, they're actually just improvements to the appeals procedure. So again, there were some typos, wrong sections listed, and we wanted to fix all of that. So these are, and also that's kind of the flavor of the continuous improvements edits, but since we were attaching the appeal section, we wanted to include that there. And then that second bullet point, we clarified in the section that is appeals of commissions decisions. It reads P, Planning and Zoning Commission, but it's really all commission decisions. So we wanted to make sure that was clear, that it was including the Design Review Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission and that method of appeals. The arbitrary and capricious standard is in the appeal section, not the C U P section. So those first three bullets are all the appeal section. And then the introduction and de novo reveal, review is going to be in the specific procedures for conditional use permits.
Madam Mayor, follow up. Thank you, Deanna. So there are no other policy changes within this document. We'll see those at another time. Okay, correct. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if there's no other, got a couple more. So just for some clarity for, I think, myself, other council members, and some of the folks who are here, can you just walk us through what the process would be and how it would be different? So a C U P application comes into planning and zoning, and then what?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, so yes, you would submit a C U P application. Everything is the same, so I'm not going to go into detail about that. You would, as an applicant, or I'll speak as if you were an applicant. As an applicant, you have your public hearing at Planning and Zoning Commission. They would render a decision, the Planning and Zoning Commission. Either you as the applicant or anyone as a party of record could appeal the application, similar, exactly the same as they do now. And in a de novo review, so what's different, in a de novo review, you would move on to a city council hearing. That record is open and public, so now anyone, not just parties of records, could testify. You're going to be able to basically conduct the hearing as if you were, you're doing a new hearing, basically, but you have all of the Planning and Zoning Commission record to review. You can read all of the testimony, the minutes, you're building on the Planning and Zoning Commission, but have the ability to run that like you're as a, as a council. And council would still be required to meet the same findings that Planning and Zoning Commission has. So you're held to the same zoning code as Planning and Zoning. So you don't just get, you don't have unlimited discretion. You have to meet the approval criteria of a C U P, but you're not reviewing the prior decision for air. You're reviewing, does the application as council before you meet the approval criteria of a C U P?
Great, so just a couple of points of clarification there. So it's a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Applicant gets their application approved, public is happy with it, nobody appeals, that's it. They're ready to go, just sort of like it is now in case if there's not an appeal. And so the appeal process is really the same. What really happens differently is that when it comes to council, then we have the ability, if somebody missed the Planning and Zoning Commission, could then come and testify if they weren't there, or if a neighborhood association missed it, you know, for whatever reason, they could come and they could testify. So that would be one of the major changes, is that we would, you know, still appeal process the same, but there would be an open public record where more people could testify than the first time around.
Correct.
Yep. And so, again, like, that is one of the small changes that I sort of see from the past. It's very common, I think, for myself as a council member to read through the transcripts, especially deliberation at the end of a, a planning and zoning meeting, and see why they've arrived at a different decision. You know, using some of their technical expertise to sort of gauge how some additional questions maybe that I might want to ask, or maybe there's some unclarity there. And so one of the challenges, I guess, that I'm running into is, is if we weren't to make this change, I feel like going into an appeal hearing, the way that it's written now, and the way the Supreme Court ruled, is that basically what I should do is I should read through the entire transcript and really make my decision based off that transcript. Because if council, council members are asking questions from the public, that public member would hopefully be saying the exact same thing. Because if they give a different answer, or they give different testimony, we're actually getting different information than planning and zoning. And so we've kind of run into these sort of clunky meetings, the last few meetings, after the Supreme Court decision, because it seems really hard to walk this line of, can I ask a question? Can I dive into something that wasn't exactly the way that it was discussed at planning and zoning? Which is really hard unless you read that exact same transcript. So that's, I think, where we're seeing a little bit of a change here, is that instead of just reviewing the exact same record without taking in any additional questions from a council member, something someone has to say, we are taking questions from council members. We're allowing more public testimony from even folks who may not be there. And if somebody testified the first time around, and maybe they wanted to adjust their public testimony, they could testify maybe even in a different way than they did at the planning and zoning. Am I getting that right?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, exactly. So you have a new record, so we can accept new information, ask questions. The public is empowered to share more information. So yes, this is going to add another layer of public engagement and opportunity for people to provide their voice. In an error standard, it is no new information shall be shared, and you are reviewing the previous decision for air, not for any of those larger considerations and new information that's presented by the community or by others.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, oh, no. Sorry. Yeah, so I've been trying to think about kind of both sides of the way that this hasn't had an impact. And the two projects that came to my mind were the Diocese project that we approved last year in the North End. That was before the Supreme Court decision. And if I remember correctly, we worked with the neighborhood's request on that to add some additional conditions that included things like height reduction, I think, retail space, and maybe even reduced construction hours. And so under this new recognition of the Supreme Court decision, we would not have been able to add those, is that correct?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember, correct.
And then the other one that I was thinking of, just a couple of weeks ago, we heard the Idaho Power Lithium Battery Storage Facility. And in that instance, we weren't able to add conditions because this was post the decision. And I, I wondered, in that case, if I, the neighborhood was really nervous about a potential fire risk, and though we heard from experts saying that that's very unlikely, it seemed to me natural for us to appease the neighbors in that scenario and perhaps reduce the landscape that's required around the facility. But we didn't have the authority to do that. And is that, so if this had been approved before that project, would we have had the authority to make the decision to appease the neighbors in that case and reduce that landscape requirement?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, yes. De novo review would allow council members to take additional public feedback and then respond and ask additional questions to see what conditions or conditions that they can place to mitigate impact. And then you would be able to place conditions as a way to approve the application or to address the appeal decision.
Thank you, Deanna.
Madam Mayor. Deanna, thank you for this presentation, it's very thorough. My question is about when, under this change, assuming this is adopted, when does P and Z have the final say? So do we have any data on how many, like, C U Ps they consider that aren't appealed? Because it seems, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if they consider a C U P, add conditions, approve it, reject it, but it is not appealed, that that would stand short of there being an appeal.
Madam Mayor, Council President Nash, correct. The Planning and Zoning Commission is always making the decision, and it is only in cases where it is appealed that it would come to council. I don't have specific data on how many times C U Ps have been appealed recently. But generally, many conditional use permits and at Planning and Zoning are not appealed.
And to clarify, that, that would be the case?
Correct.
Madam Mayor. Actually, sorry, I didn't hit the mic.
I didn't see you.
Deanna, I actually had a question kind of along that line, because a lot of comment that we received was, and I'm grateful that neighbors were thinking about this, but don't get up the process, and they, they were overly worried about our time up here, which is great, appreciate that. In terms of potentially more appeals because of this decision, just want to clarify, like, I, as Councilmember Hallie Burton mentioned, this body has operated in a manner that any prior C U P that came before us or any kind of application project comes before us, it's met with curiosity from us, especially when neighbors are taking their time to send in feedback or here, spending their time here to testify. And, and so that was the time investment that, that we sign up for and contribute already. And I do feel like this is a continuation of that, that we would expect that level of business to proceed as it was, not a significant increase. Would that be your opinion from, from a staff perspective as well?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Morales, there has always been the opportunity to appeal, exactly as you said, and always with the understanding that council is going to approach that application authentically. And I think with the goal being that we want the best outcome from our community, and that if extra process does allow us to dig in and find the right condition to mitigate impact, then that is the time worth, well spent for our community.
Yeah, thanks.
Madam Mayor, before we run on, if, if we don't approve the de novo review, Deanna, can you clearly define what is our decision making ability at council when we look at an appeal from Planning and Zoning?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Coralis, that's a good question. So you are going to be held to the standard that is currently in the code, and it would be you need to find as a five-point error standard. So it's listing five ways that that decision needs to be kind of reaching an error. So you are looking at, with a closed record, at the way the decision that the Planning and Zoning Commission made. So very tightly connected to exactly what was discussed and the action, the manner in which Planning and Zoning made that decision, not the decision itself.
Madam Mayor, and just to follow up with that, so if I can summarize, it's really, our ability on these appeals today is really looking if there has been an error made and not to be able to add any new information or condition to make it a more robust project. Really, we're looking to whether that standard and P and Z and their decision, if there was an error made in their process.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Horace, correct. And it's a very high standard too for the errlessness. And it lists very detailed, five points of exactly what that means, and it's very strict.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, and I think to be clear there, and this is, I think, where I had a little bit of confusion. I think in the past, we considered if the Planning and Zoning did not consider a condition that would have solved those issues, in the past, we would have considered that an error. And I think what we got from the Supreme Court was like, pretty clear information of, like, that is not an actual error, that's something different that you would not be allowed to do. And I think that that's probably where my biggest confusion was, is like, you know, but wait a second, like, that's the error. The error was that they did not consider this condition, and we had done that for years and years and years, and hadn't had any issues with it until the most recent decision. So that's probably where it's at.
Correct.
Yep, thank you. Madam Mayor. Deanna, can I quiz you on LUPA? Hearing some giggles from attorney behind me. So after the Supreme Court decision came out, I read it, I asked council to read it, and I went to the Land Use Planning Act to try to better understand, like, the role of planning and zoning. And it felt like to me, based on that, that planning and zoning is a, is a creation of council and a delegation of its authority, and that council uses that to lighten its workload and to have another set of eyes on this. Is that your understanding under LUPA, that we can choose whether or not P and Z exists, what their authority is, how long or short of a leash that is under LUPA? Is that, is that a fair characterization of your understanding?
Is that a fair characterization of your understanding of the Land Use Planning Act?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Nash, yes. Lupa allows us to have a Planning and Zoning Commission. It does not require us to. City Council can be the final decider on conditional use permits, like it is in the city of Eagle. So yes, it's city council creates the rules for how planning and zoning should operate and review decisions.
In that regard, and this might be more philosophical question. So if you don't feel complacent, that's fine. But is it fair to say that, consistent with the Land Use Planning Act, the P&amp;Z is an extension of council's authority over land use decision-making?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Nash, yes. It is appointed by city council. It is implementing our plans and policies. And so it is an extension of city council. If I'm understanding that correctly, it is.
You're agreeing with me.
Madam Mayor, Deanna, you did a really nice job of just showing how different cities handle this issue. And that's one of the beauties of local government is that we all can do things a little differently based on our community. And I know that you're not a historian, but has this provision always existed within the city of Boise?
Madam Mayor.
From the beginning of time type thing?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willis, I can't speak to the beginning of time. But since I've been at the city, and so it was in the previous zoning code.
So at least 60 years. Okay.
Madam Mayor. Heard a lot about the timing of this amendment coming before us. Ignoring the specific project that this lawsuit was founded on, if such a decision from that of Supreme Court was made on any project, any appeal over the past however long, do you believe that this amendment would have been brought to us with the same speed?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Morales, yes. We would have brought to you the results of the decision and presented, if presented the desire for city council to have an open record on appeals for the ability to create conditions and to mitigate impact. We would present this as an option to address that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So now we will have the neighborhood associations up. Larry Ice for Centennial. You're signed up twice, but I'm just going to have you speak once if you're speaking for the neighborhood association.
I'm speaking for the Neighborhood Association now. I have a personal comment afterwards.
I'll need you to just combine them and just let us know that's the case. We don't let people speak twice.
Oh, okay.
Just procedurally. So if you'll just let us know that you've got a personal thought at the end, but keep it within your time. That's how we'll need to do it. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
All right. Well, thank you. Madam Mayor, city council members. My name is Larry Ice, 14048 West Talon Creek Drive in Boise. I've been asked to speak for the Centennial Neighborhood Association membership. The Centennial Neighborhood Association supports the Boise Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation that the city complete an audit of the entire modern zoning code by the end of 2025 to identify ways to improve the code. When the audit is complete and the improvements presented, the Centennial Neighborhood Association will consider the Boise City Council's request to change the modern zoning code appeal process and to give authority to the city council to review conditional use permit appeals de novo and to overturn planning and zoning commission decisions without finding error. Currently, the Centennial Neighborhood Association supports the ideas in ZOA 25-2, but the optics of the timing and the amendment request have created some negative public perceptions of the Boise City Council's motivations. We feel this amendment is best debated on the merits of changing the appeal process without the distractions of the one process that precipitated the request. In short, the Centennial Neighborhood Association supports the Boise City Council's request to change the conditional use permit process, but would prefer to see that request included in an audit of the entire modern zoning code at a later date. And I think.
You still got time?
Well, I still got eight minutes. I expected three.
You know, we look fondly on people that use less time.
Okay, again, my name is still Larry Ice, 14048 West Talon Creek Drive in Boise. I would like to express support for ZOA 25-2 for several reasons, all tied to the increase, increasing public participation. ZOA 25-2 provides additional opportunities for the public to comment on conditional use permits or appeals and the appeals of our most controversial projects. It allows people to file appeals and come before the city council and appear de novo, add additional information, which will make that approval or disapproval better, better decisions. Conditional use permits are often the most controversial applications presented. I fully respect the P&amp;Z approval process. And I recognize that the P&amp;Z Commission, as well as the PDS Director, are all appointed by the mayor, confirmation by the council, and serve at the pleasure of the mayor. But I also believe that the P&amp;Z Commission is more inclined to make decisions only on code, not on political opinion or the will of the people. And that's where the city council comes in. We live in a democracy where public is allowed to participate in government decisions. We agree by consent to be governed by our democratically elected representatives. While we will only get the government we deserve, I would hope the people of Boise will keep informed, be involved, choose representatives wisely. In that hope, I believe it's only proper that our elected officials, in this case, the Boise City Council, make the final decisions on these controversial applications. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
You got two people. I heard Halliburton and then Sted.
Larry, thanks for coming down. It's great to see you and appreciate the work that you do in Centennial Neighborhood Association. And I don't disagree with you. I think that it's, I would love the idea to be reviewing everything at once, making all sorts of changes at once. And at the same time, later tonight, I've got an application that's an appeal in front of me about the Ada County Jail that I want to support the jail and its expansion in a lot of different ways. But there are some problems that we're going to be running into. And we don't have the ability to solve them today. And so I guess what I'm trying to get you to maybe comment on is you're saying that like, you don't think that this is a bad idea. We actually think it's good, but you think we should make it towards the end of the year. Like, how do you think we should balance that with probably, you know, 10, you know, five to 10 different applications that we may hear between now and the end of the year? And do we just not take that stance of trying to make those applications better in the meantime?
Councilmember Halliburton, afraid I can't answer that because the comment I made was for the Centennial Neighborhood Association. Anything I add to that would be my personal opinion.
Fair enough.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Thanks for coming down here, Mr. Ice. I wanted to, I wondered if you, one of the questions I'd ask, because I know that we have worked on this comprehensive audit and it's working its way through the process a couple of weeks behind this process. And I wanted to, and I asked staff about that. But I just, I guess, wanted to confirm that you received that information and that's something that you can share back to your neighborhood association, that that comprehensive audit has been done and will be complete in the next several weeks.
Speaking personally, again, that comment was part of the Centennial Neighborhood Association script. I heard that loud and clear tonight. We've got two board members sitting right over here.
Thank you so much. And I just, we, I think the comments we received from you here were the late correspondence that we also received via email. So I appreciate having received those and thanks so much for coming out tonight.
Well, thank you.
Madam Mayor, one more. Larry, stay up there. First of all, I just want to thank the Centennial Neighborhood Association for coming. One of the newest neighborhood associations, and I would say one of the most active. So thank you for coming. I know that this issue doesn't, that precipitated this doesn't directly affect your part of town, but it's very telling about your commitment to Boise, that you would come and let your voice be heard. So Larry, if I were just to summarize what you said on behalf of the association, it's probably a good change. Timing's a little sus. Suspect.
I think it's safe to say that's the message I was trying to convey for the Centennial Neighborhood Association.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. And now we have Katie Decker from Veterans. Are there any neighborhood associations online? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Katie Decker, speaking on behalf of the Veterans Park Neighborhood Association. And my address is 5001 West Wyomosa Street, Boise, Idaho. I wanted to start just by adding to the staff presentation something that I didn't hear, which I assume you are all aware of, having read the meeting minutes. But planning and zoning was fairly divided on this issue. They originally considered a motion to deny, to not recommend approval of this issue. And it was a split vote, three to three. One of the commissioners who voted against denial later stated that while he was voting to approve the, to recommend approval of these changes, it was not because he wanted to, but simply because he knew that council had asked for this. So he didn't feel empowered to deny council what they had asked for. And I think that that's a poor basis to share your opinions via. I think that the Planning and Zoning Commission expressed some concerns about the movement to de novo review delegitimizing their work or de-emphasizing it or disincentivizing their own high levels of commitment that they have demonstrated historically in these matters. Back to my pre-prepared comments. VPNA urges you to reject the proposed amendments to the zoning code. The proposal to grant de novo review of conditional use permits to city council represents a fundamental and troubling shift. It removes the requirement for council to find error in planning and zoning decisions and allows you to retry cases from scratch. And you could disregard the findings and expertise of the Planning and Zoning Commission through that process. Planning and zoning originally was created to insulate development decisions from campaign donations and political influences of that type. If council can simply override the reasonable decisions of planning and zoning for political reasons, we can expect to see more legal challenges, not fewer. Our written comments include a list of CUP appeals to council, which were denied in the past several years, including appeals under the old code. And in every case, the CU appeal denial was made along with a statement from multiple council members that there was no error in the underlying Planning and Zoning Commission decision. So this is a standard of review that you've been consistently applying in your denials. It's not a new process nor a surprising turn of events following the recent Supreme Court decision in VPNA versus City of Boise. Council has always been aware of its statutory obligations under the standard of review. We've discussed the timing of this amendment being suspect, but it was announced directly in the same press release with the city's reaction to the Supreme Court decision. That's problematic. It's not suspect. It's black and white. It clearly links this proposed change to code to support for a single developer's application for shelter in the Veterans Park Neighborhood. The amendment also obviously comes less than two years after the multi-year zoning code rewrite process, which was intended to apply one consistent set of rules to all projects, reducing discretionary decisions and keeping development review professional and predictable. By its very nature, the removal of the CUP decision authority from an objective body, specifically to one who you are saying, because you were elected, you are using criteria other than those at code to make discretionary conditions that specifically counter to the process and the goals of the zoning code rewrite that you provided at that time. If the de novo review had been a longstanding policy goal, then you could have put that as part of the zoning code rewrite process as some other cities do that. Some other cities do not do that. Both standards exist throughout Idaho. We understand that some cities use de novo review. But the fact that this wasn't even considered at that time, when it has been sued upon in the past, it just simply has not been ruled upon in the past. The city was aware, the city's legal department at least was aware, that this was an issue of contention that the Supreme Court had not chosen to rule in on. Doing this only now in a direct reaction to the Supreme Court decision overturning interfaith sanctuary CUP is problematic. And as the Planning and Zoning Commission pointed out during their deliberation, there's a cleaner process to addressing deficiencies in an application than having elected council members create additional conditions from the dais. A rejected application can be sent back to the applicant with comments so they can address the potential impacts or other concerns and return with a more well-thought-out application for review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Also, in fact, per Councilman Halliburton's example about adding existing conditions, under our existing standard of review, you can find error if a major part point of contention was not addressed by the decision. So if there was something that was simply not addressed, that was a major cause of concern, you can find error on that and add conditions about that portion of the decision.
Madam Mayor, if I could, Katie, the, as I read the Supreme Court's decision, it was my understanding that it was their discretion to impose conditions, but they were not obligated to. So I, my reading of the case is different than what I've heard you just describe, which is I don't think council can find error on a closed record. What you've described to me sounds like an open record of considering new information. It wasn't considering new information and imposing conditions on there. What I heard, what I read in the decision was that it's discretionary. They're not obligated to impose conditions to get something right. So how do you square that with what you've just told us?
They are not obligated to impose conditions or additional conditions, but they are obligated to find that the project will not impact surrounding areas. So what I am saying is if there is a major impact that the lower board did not address, then you can say, you did not address this impact. I find error in that. Therefore, I'm reopening this case and I can make a new ruling now. In the existing standard, it really should be done in two steps. Effectively, you have to find error. And if you have find error, then you can make any decision that you want to after finding error. And so, for example, if there is a major fire hazard that has been entirely overlooked, the example Council President Proton stood, brought up earlier. She specifically said that there was not actually a fire hazard, that the experts had said there is no fire hazard. And so she was not finding error. And I believe you had a similar quote in the media that you wouldn't have changed the decision on the battery case, but you would have liked to have the ability to. You didn't see that there was any error. But if the expert opinion had been, there is a major fire hazard here and the commission's decision just didn't address the fire hazard, then you can find error because the impact has not been addressed. Because the underlying CUP approval criteria that there is not a potential impact or that services are sufficient was not met. Therefore, that's an error in the decision. In the Supreme Court case in question, the council imposed conditions that had not been in the staff report to P&amp;Z. However, as the Supreme Court specifically mentioned in their oral deliberations, those conditions had predominantly been considered explicitly by P&amp;Z and rejected as being able to sufficiently eliminate impact. So they were not a reasonable standard of error. We're also concerned about changes to the arbitrary and capricious standard of review, the proposed redlined delete language that helps clarify what this legal term actually means for local decision makers who may not be fluent in legalese. It's a widely used term dating back to 1946. And sources like the Ninth Circuit's Guide on Standards of Review confirm that it is interpreted to mean that the decision be rational, consider all of the facts and be made with due consideration, not on whim, preference, or political expediency. It also makes clear that even when multiple interpretations are possible based on the record, overturning a decision requires a clear air in judgment, not simply a disagreement. Our own legal counsel assures us that courts still consider difference of opinion issues to be arbitrary and capricious, regardless of whether it is written into code, contrary to the legal opinion staff provided today. Striking this explanation will change, of course, Striking this explanation will change how courts apply the law, but it could cause local bodies to misapply the standard, increasing the chance of costly mistakes in litigation. There's no benefit to removing that clarity from code. Honestly, if our code routinely allows appeals to be overturned because one body has a difference of opinion with another body, then we need to revisit the standards at code and add more specificity, not attempt to phrase our code to allow a mere difference of opinion to overturn a prior decision. In short, if we want to rely on the rule of law, we need to be confident that any review body will come to the same conclusion. On a separate note, I'd like to register my concern that parties of record who submitted comments on this proposed code change before the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting earlier this month were not directly notified of the date of the subsequent city council hearing on the matter. In addition to the lack of an electronic notification to parties of record, this was generally not a well-publicized meeting, so I expect there will be lower public turnout tonight than we saw earlier this month at Planning and Zoning, where the oral public testimony was overwhelmingly against this change. In conclusion, we respectfully ask you to reject the proposal to grant de novo review and to retain the full definition of arbitrary and capricious standard. Let's protect a process based on expertise, fairness, and consistency, not reactive politics. If the council can overturn Planning and Zoning Commission decisions on no more than a difference of opinion, then applicants and the public will have no more indication of the legal sufficiency of an application than the mere whim of decision makers. Such a circumstance defeats Lupa's express approval criteria standard and subjects the city to more litigation, not less, as the process to decide approval or denial of development proposals becomes more a political expediency as opposed to an objective assessment of facts. The code's existing delegation to professional Planning and Zoning Commission's original decision-making authority represents the city's commitment to a rational process that insulates decisions from undue political interference. The loosening of that commitment in response to the court's enforcement constitutes a threat to both neighborhoods and developers. Thank you for your time.
Madam Mayor, I have a couple of questions, Katie. First, I want to, I'm, I am sorry if there was a mix-up in noticing or dates or things like that, but I want to assure you that, I know I, and I think I can confidently say, we all reviewed all of the oral and written testimony that was given during the commission hearing. I watched it live, so any public comments have been received by us and reviewed. Also, so my first question for you, I guess, is, I'm curious what you said early on, that the commission's role, part of their role is to avoid campaign donations and political reasons, but I was curious where you find that. I have served for the city for almost eight years, and I've never heard that, so I wondered what evidence supports that claim.
Yes, let me, I can pull it up shortly. There is a handbook that discusses the original creation of those bodies. I understand that it is not routinely provided to commission numbers. If other people have questions, I'm happy to.
Okay, yeah, I have another one, while you're pulling that up. So then, to me, it feels a little in conflict, I guess, that, I'm hoping you can help me understand this, that we've heard so far that it's inappropriate, maybe that this is being reviewed outside of the entire code audit, but that also this wasn't included in that code rewrite, and so therefore shouldn't be included. But to be included in an audit implies to me that there is an expectation that we will, and we made that commitment when the code was passed, that we would annually review and tweak, and this is a living document that is not in its final stage at that point, and we've committed to reviewing it. But so it seems in conflict to me that, on one hand, it should have been included in this annual audit, and on the other hand, it wasn't included in the first round, so shouldn't be included at all, because there shouldn't be changes. Can you help me understand that?
That's not a comment that VPNA has made. I think that the commission added that, that it should be part of an annual audit, or that at least an annual audit should occur. However, I think that the intent of an annual audit would be to review the code as a whole, not only redlines that had been made. I mean, effectively, the old code is non-existent now. There is only one code in Boise, and so an annual audit presumably can change things that weren't changed in the zoning code rewrite. I do have that, the manual created by the Association of Idaho Cities, who assists new planning and zoning commissioners in carrying out their responsibilities under Lupa, it's called Citizen Planners, the Establishment Forum and Duties of Planning and Zoning Commission is the chapter title, and I believe it's put out by smart. That was in the record.
Check that out. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, questions? Katie, thanks so much for coming and for, first, Katie, thanks so much for coming and for giving us the Neighborhood Association's opinion. I just want to make sure that I'm clear, you gave a lot of, I think, sage arguments here. At the end of the day, is it your opinion and those in your association that the current system in how planning and zoning reviews an application, and then the way that it is then appealed to city council works well? That it's, at this point, it's not broken?
I mean, if I were creating a perfect world, I think I would separate the city council's review into two meetings, one specifically to assess error, and then if error is found, one to basically rehear the case. And I think that, you know, listening to the testimony before you at every CUP appeal hearing, there's always this fine line of, well, should I only talk about error, or do I need to bring up all the issues to make sure they've heard them? Because if they find error, they need to hear them, you know? I would love to have that bifurcated.
And then, on that same note, if you were rewriting, if you were queen, let's put that way, if you were queen and you got to rewrite this system, what would you change in this section? I mean, you've given us some good counsel on, you know, you would have two meetings, you would have some time to review the error, and then some time to rethink about it. Is there anything else that you think is lacking here?
I would have to think longer about that question, I'm afraid.
Totally fair, totally fair. Thank you.
Thank you. I do wonder if a middle ground is possible, as it seems like the council's primary objection to the existing code is they want the ability to make minor tweaks to changes, rather than wholesale overturning of underlying decisions. So what if there was a process of, if P&amp;Z was the decision maker, since council is a quasi-judicial branch in their appeal review, instead of saying, these are the new conditions, you send that back to P&amp;Z and say, does this still meet what you thought? And they produce the final reason statement.
Madam Mayor, really quick, Katie, thank you very much for coming out here and commenting. You've always been a very thoughtful person who wants to be involved, is always really involved in city government, and I really appreciate that. A couple of the comments I heard, I just want to have just a clarity on. So from the Veterans Park Neighborhood Association, I'm hearing things that council makes decisions on whim or with political influence. Is that really the goal, the belief of the Veterans Park Neighborhood Association, is that our decision-making many times is on a whim and due to political influence?
That is part of the arbitrary and capricious standard, on a whim, and it's very tied to difference of opinion language. So if the same project is before two bodies, and one denies an application and one approves it, then there's no clear indication of what is necessary to approve an application of that type. And so if a difference of opinion is so prevalent and possible, then in legal terms, that's equivalent to a whim.
Madam Mayor, and just follow up really quick, Katie, and I just want to give a quick example. We talked about this electrical substation, and as you mentioned, that if, your belief that if we would have found P&amp;Z's decision on this to error, or have a major error, then it would open it up to add other conditions, which is not what I heard from the Supreme Court. But let me put another thought there, is that there's other reasons that maybe it's not a major error, but maybe there's an enhancement. Some of the things I had considered adoring is either some sound monitoring, some off-gassing monitoring, and these are things that P&amp;Z didn't err, but these are things that can be additioned. So can you understand that there's some conditions that the council could add that really are additive to the project and can provide benefit out to the public?
So in that case, could we put this process of maybe sending recommendations back to P&amp;Z and having them approve them? I think that part of the disconnect is what most of the public who has commented on this proposal sees, is where a project was entirely denied to entirely approve, rather than an approval upheld with slight modifications. And so those are really pretty different tracks, that maybe could be dealt differently with at code. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman, for calling us.
All right, we will go into the folks that have signed up, Gary and Denise Zimmerman, and followed by that, Tim Hennessy and Deborah Frank.
Hello. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Gary Zimmerman, and I live on Plum Street in Boise. I strongly oppose the proposed zoning amendment, which would essentially undermine the authority and expertise of your Planning and Zoning Commission by allowing you to disregard their decision on CUPs upon appeal. By seeking to change the rules immediately after the Supreme Court upheld the PCC's well-reasoned decision on the interface sanctuary cup and the unmitigable harm that it would cause the neighborhood, this amendment sends two clear and damaging messages to the residents of Boise. One, that residents' voices don't matter, because the city will simply change the rules to achieve a desired political outcome, overriding decisions that were based on community input and their impacts. Two, that special interest will be prioritized over residents' voices and due process, as this change seems designed to facilitate approval of a harmful project rightly rejected by the PCC. The city's explicit statement that interface sanctuary can reapply after this amended process is in place clearly reveals the city's intent to override the established planning process for a specific political objective. Furthermore, this amendment's targeting of just the cups decided by the PCC and not other major permits, such as major river permits, hillside, et cetera, underscores its specific and questionable intent, and saying that the amendment enhances transparency and accountability is misleading. Residents already hold you responsible for your appointed commission's decisions through appeals, the courts, and elections. This amendment undermines that accountability by introducing the risk of politically-driven overrides, making land use decisions less transparent, and eroding residents' ability to understand and influence changes that directly affect their lives. Real transparency is demonstrated by listening to residents, upholding established and sound planning processes, and valuing the expertise of your own PCC. Let's be clear, this amendment is not about better zoning or serving the general welfare. Rather, it's a clear attempt to bypass a Planning and Zoning Commission decision that was based upon their expertise and community input. Please respect the expertise of your Planning and Zoning Commission, uphold the integrity of your planning processes, and ensure Boise's development is guided by established principles, not political manipulation. I urge you to vote no on ZOA 25-2.
Thank you, Gary.
Madam Mayor, Gary, I don't know the answer to this, so I'm curious if you do. It seems like you've been very invested in the decision regarding interface. I think two council members here were involved in that decision. We've had four others turn over since then. Do you have any idea how many members of P&amp;Z were on P&amp;Z at the time of that decision?
That are on it now?
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe half.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks. All right, Denise.
Madam Mayor, just one more question for Gary. Actually, curious, when you're talking, and I've heard this from other neighbors, but I appreciated your testimony, those provided ahead of time as well, talking about planning and zoning, overturning those for political outcomes. We're talking about CUPs tonight, the CUP process. However, we also have, you know, in the past year, recommendations by Planning and Zoning for other types of applications, zoning ordinance amendments, annexations, those kinds of things, where we have made a decision different than planning and zoning. Is your opinion that our decision-making, contrary to what Planning and Zoning provided for those recommendations, is also politically motivated and should not have happened, or is it just specifically CUPs? And can you speak to that?
Well, part would be if you're already following an established standard that people know how to work with, so they can anticipate, predict, and have a reliable system that promotes transparency. In the case of this change, I would ask, why aren't you changing major hillside permits? Why aren't you changing riverside or river permits? Why is it just cups? Why was it just a PCC decision?
I think I got, I think I got the answer to my question. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Okay, Denise? And then up will be Tim Hennessy and then Deborah Frank.
This request is not about one denied request.
Will you get just a little closer to the mic?
Okay. It is about how much power you, city council, should have over planning and zoning and all of the citizens in Boise. A Supreme Court denial of one of your pet projects was a catalyst that pushed you into believing you should be the only authority to deny or approve cup requests. The current zoning code has a process with checks and balances to keep council from misusing your authority. With de novo review, you can still make arbitrary and capricious decisions just to get the answer you want. The current process goes through the commission, council, and the judicial system. Following this process keeps the city of Boise from onslaught of lawsuits. I'm not ready to pay for a lot of lawsuits the city will see because a de novo review is considered inappropriate, conflict of interest, or actual corruption. The current code works well. What you needed to comprehend is that you cannot just disagree with a commission decision. You must still prove there is a reason why the decision is wrong. You cannot just say the commission didn't do something they weren't required to do, and you cannot make new rules to justify overturning a decision. You've used all these tricks to overrule a commission decision, and the judicial system caught you. Therefore, you have now decided you need to change the code to allow yourself to override the commission without reason. Why am I here? To me, it seems a little disingenuous, and maybe even futile, to have to ask you to deny a change that you want. I am really hoping you have taken a step back and realized that this knee-jerk reaction to one denied request is not the right move, as it affects all future cup decisions. For example, I have a lot in my neighborhood. I want to put an ice cream parlor on it. The neighbors are ecstatic, but I need a cup, because I want to put a drive-through in. The commission overwhelmingly approves it, but someone appeals it to council. With de novo review, you could throw out all the commission work and the decision and all the positive input. You could start over, using your own record, and you could make the final decision. This is not about one denied request, it's about you overreaching your authority. Boise will become an autocracy when you, with you as the only decision maker, please deny this request and keep Boise about the people.
Madam Mayor, I just have a quick question. So in the ice cream parlor scenario, immediately my question is, well, does the code allow a drive-through? And in your, no, no, but so wait, so I'm sorry, I know, so I'm going to just ask a question. So I guess, is it clear to you that we still are required to follow the development code in all of our decisions?
Yeah, but. Yeah, but the thing is you have de novo review. You can do what you want.
Thank you. Thank. Tim Hennessy? And then Deborah Frank?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. Tim Hennessy, North Seventeenth Street in Boise. Like the majority of those who provided written testimony, I oppose this amendment. Much of my opposition has to do with how the city it, it has really put forth a lack of leadership in dealing with this entire Interface Sanctuary affair. After Interfaith purchased the property without the necessary zoning in place and after PNC put, rendered its opinion that it was an inappropriate location in which to put forth a low barrier shelter, where was the city in sitting down with the applicant to say, look it? You purchased the property without the necessary zoning in place. You're going to have an uphill battle. Why not let us work with you and support you in finding an appropriate location for this low barrier shelter? Where was the city in that? It's a good question. I say this because the city has extensive relationships with property owners and developers throughout the city. Surely, the city could have used some of its leverage with these property owners and/or developers to find a more appropriate location for this shelter, which had the in place zoning necessary to put it there. I think it was a missed opportunity by the city to broker some kind of a deal here, and we could have avoided this entire mess. Which mess is costing the taxpayer a small fortune? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deborah?
I'm Deborah Frank and I live on North Thirty Fifth Street. And Madam Mayor and City Council members, thank you for allowing me to testify in the proposed rewrite of ZOA 2502. I oppose the modern zoning up rewrite proposed by the mayor through the Planning and Zoning Department only weeks after the Idaho Supreme Court ruled against City Council in the Interfaith Sanctuary lawsuit stating City Council was arbitrary and capricious. This proposed rewrite change is so telling. It's so, so telling. In other words, let's change the law, we, City Council, so we can go back and do it all again, and it will be legal this time. Again, let's change the law so we can do it again. This proposed zoning rewrite change is strictly for political clout, and it literally stinks. It smells of power hungry elected politicians. The Planning and Zoning Commission was strictly created as a separate body to insulate development decisions from the political machine. These members of Planning and Zoning are appointed, appointed by the mayor. Members do not receive a salary or a political campaign contribution from prospective applicants as City Council and the mayor does. They, yes, you are paid. The Planning and Zoning Commissioners are appointed based on their professional, their land used interest, their expertise in various planning and development areas, which allow them to specialize in assessing the application and legal code requirements. The rewrite will strip the Planning and Commissioners of their expertise. Why will Boise even have a Planning and Zoning Department? Let's just send all new business to the commission and let them approve it because that's what's going to happen, special interest. One of the initial goals of the original modern zoning code rewrite was to reduce the load of appeals on zoning issues that were coming to City Council, allowing to council to focus on more broad process, prospect, policies. This proposed rewrite will undo the process as well as open up the city to even more lawsuits and more taxpayers paying for these lawsuits. This rewrite is wrong, unfair, self-serving, and quite frankly, it really looks very corrupt. This proposed rewrite only benefits big bucks developers and special interest processes. And also, we've, we call it the Interface Sanctuary bailout. The people of Idaho have their eyes and ears wide open. We see you, we hear you, and we are disappointed, very disappointed. We have a voice, and that's called election.
All right, I don't have anybody else on this sheet, but I know that there are other people here. So I'm going to ask if anybody's in the room that wants to testify, please come on up here to the front. And then do we have folks online? I'll have the clerk call their names out. You can go ahead and then we'll, welcome back, come on up. And then we're going to have the clerk call out who's online.
Good evening, Gretchen Hoyt, Eight Nine One North Landers Street. That's okay, I'm waiting. You guys ready? So my entire prepared speech just went out the window, so I'm going to wing it. I'm going to try my best. As you know, thank you, I've been in front of a lot of you and took the question, how many people are in planning and zoning before? I think it was three are still there, maybe two, I'm not sure. So during tonight's council presentation by whatever her name is, it starts with a D, and your guys' questions.
Deanna.
Thank you, Deanna. Thank you, Jimmy, Mr. Halliburton. That your, it was clear that your questions from council that you feel that the planning and zoning code change would allow council to make large changes in CUPs when and if needed related to new info, and therefore new decisions can be made. That's at least what I'm understanding. So then, if a low barrier shelter, Congress, low barrier Congress shelter is so contentious, you could alter the CUP to mitigate large problems such as the low barrier population not being placed in a residential area where it's built. And this, so this, to me, tonight, I'm taking this opportunity. This is about Interfaith alliances, low, Congress, low barrier shelter on State Street. Just because the timing, the mayor was up at the shelter saying, we're going to change the rules. It did kind of feel like bad timing and didn't help me with my trust of things. In Mayor McLean's public statement reported by Boise Dev's online paper, she stated, "A low barrier shelter like Interface Sanctuary is key as we care for Boiseans and partner to develop housing that's affordable." And that's very true, and I believe that. As I personally have repeated over and over and over again, a Congress at low barrier shelter is not the answer. If it were the solution, it would not have faced such intense overwhelming opposition already and will surely do so again. We are at a crossroads of an opportunity in this city to build a shelter system that could be the crown jewel of this country. But Mayor McLean, you have not, nor has the City Council. And I know you guys are all new and we're starting this all over again, except for a couple of you, and you were on planning and zoning. You haven't educated the residents of the city about what a Boise low barrier shelter is. I have had fire, police, EMS to the overdose in my front yard, in my yard. Do not tell me they didn't know what a low barrier shelter was. That's a problem if their frontline people don't know. Oh, my God. I truly believe that if the city understood a low barrier shelter, it would rise up with its enormous wealth and help Interfaith develop a shelter system that works for all of us, the homeless and housed alike. One of the values at this city is that there is nothing we can't do better. It's on the wall. And I challenge the mayor and the City Council, and I will help also. I'm trying my best. I can't stop talking to people to do better as we reenter the fray of this shelter discussion because it's not going to be any better this time around.
Madam Mayor, I've got a question. One, I appreciate your honest testimony, and I appreciate you being here tonight. And I agree with you about the timing, but we don't always get a pick timing for lots of things.
And I learned a lot tonight. Otherwise, I would have read all this other stuff.
There's so many things I wish I could have changed the timing on. It doesn't always work that way. There's a chance that an application goes in front of planning and zoning for a low barrier shelter in this neighborhood or some other neighborhood, who knows? And they approve it. And the community is not happy with how that went because they don't think they have addressed all the safety concerns from, that was mentioned there. To me, I see an opportunity for council to continue to address some of those concerns and to put additional conditions on something and not just say like, no, we have to approve it because planning and zoning already approved it. And so I understand what you're saying, but I'm seeing it that like, here's one more layer that we have a chance to address some of the concerns from the community. And what I hear you saying is the opposite. And so I'm trying to understand, like, can you see the situation where council has the ability to make an application stronger? Or do you only see council's involvement making it weaker when we engage?
No, I totally, looking at what Clegg did and what everybody did at that first round, things were, conditions were applied. But the bottom line is evidence based practice across this country, speaking as a person who spent thirty years dealing with this population, you cannot mitigate a Congress at low barrier person next to a family that's trying to clean up their act five hundred yards from the Boise women's.
And so my question is, is wouldn't you want council to make an application stronger?
That is why I scrapped my, the first part of my speech, which was along the lines of everybody else here, but I agree with the guy from Seventeenth Street.
Sure.
We have an opportunity to do this better. And the intensity of what happened for the first two years, if the separation, if the populations was separated, if the twenty, ten to twenty percent.
I think we may be venturing into, I think we're venturing into a different category. I want to just thank you one more time for being here. I want to thank you for speaking from the heart and trying to help us understand this a little bit more. And, you know, for all the times you come before council, so thank you.
Thank you. Are you testifying? Come on up. And then we've got one person online, so we'll take that person next.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Jeff Wardle, my address is Two Fifty One East Front, and I'm going to be very brief. Councilmember Willetts posed the question, what's the history of your appeal process? Well, I was here. I was here when we went through this in the early two thousands. In two thousand and two, the City Council repealed and then adopted the, functionally, the appeal process you have in front of you. When they did it, they purported to establish standards for review that were drawn from, but not identical to the provisions set forth in Idaho Code sixty seven, fifty two, seventy nine, four, which is where the arbitrary and capricious standard comes from. The five standards that are articulated there were a restatement or rephrasing of sixty seven, fifty two, seventy nine, four. The, those of us that are regular land use practitioners and those of us that, that are here regularly and some of the neighborhood voices at that time were critical of it because if you're going to rely upon a statute, then either cite the statute, don't create standards that are different. Don't rephrase the statute. The statute says what arbitrary and capricious is. Now, Councilmember Willetts, you asked what the background was. Well, at that time, planning and zoning came forward with it because there had been a significant number of neighborhood appeals that were of questionable merit. And at the time, in two thousand and two, the City Council heard from both pro neighborhood activists on both sides. Then East End Neighborhood Association Steve Lord showed up and testified in support of this modification to streamline the appeal process and try to track fifty two, seventy nine, four. However, there were some very capable, recognized members of our community who were strong advocates for neighborhoods, including Mary Ann Jordan, including Dawn Alloway, including Gary Allen, that pointed out that when you eliminate free review, you handcuff the ability of the City Council to respond in the manner you've all identified, as you did with the diocese, as you attempted to do in other applications. So for the last twenty five years, we've had this structure. And you, as a City Council, and your predecessors frequently wanted those policy decisions to come up, that if there was a dispute, if there was something that needed to be sorted out, you would do it. So the Supreme Court issued a decision, and I'm not here to talk about that. We're not, that's not the matter before you. But it would be malpractice to not take into consideration what the Supreme Court says you've done is wrong and correct it. So that's the background, that's the history, that's how you got here. I recommend and request that you adopt the ordinance that's been proposed by your staff. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got one person online, Katie Fite.
Yes, Katie Fite, Ten O Six North Fifth Boise. I thought the testimony by Mr. Hennessy was very good. In fact, I remember before that you even started this new process, when I heard about the decision, I sent you all an email saying, hey, you know, this is an opportunity to go back and review what a bad location this is for a homeless shelter, or how dangerous it is for the people to have to use Sixth Street, uh, Sixth Street, God, State Street to get there back and forth, which is a daunting, dangerous place to even contemplate crossing the road on foot. And the whole density and the mixing of, of women and children in this facility, this low barrier shelter, and how cramped it will be is also a big problem. But anyway, I think the city is on the wrong track here. What you should be doing is seeking a more appropriate place for a shelter or potentially shelters that are closer to serve a whole array of services and basically things for the homeless people to do. I mean, what are they going to do but go out in the neighborhood here? And this shelter is right by people's homes. And beyond that, as a citizen, I'm just outraged that if you're looking at the zoning code, what you need to look at are things like the sighting of the lithium battery facility, uh, energy storage facility within two hundred feet of homes. There isn't even anything in the code that covers that as a city body the Planning and Zoning Commission brought up. I mean, to, to not deal immediately with that issue that was totally absent in the modern zoning code is, I think, a huge dereliction of your duty. So anyway, I urge you to listen to what Mr. Hennessy's wise words said. And instead of work to make people angrier at you, work to find a reasonable solution to this.
Thanks, Katie. Anybody else?
Madam Mayor, if I may just make a comment that, just to make clear on the record that this isn't a discussion on a shelter or on Interfaith, that this is about a decision for an appeal, for design review, and for planning and zoning.
Thank you. Anybody else online? Madam Mayor, that was our only hand raised. All right. Anybody else here? I'm going to close the public hearing. We will take a five minute break and then, unless folks, I just need to take a bio break at some point, but we could also deliberate if. Okay, great. We will be back for deliberation. All right, we'll stop talking about generational names and move back into, the hearing's been closed. So before there's deliberation, I would like a motion on the table.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of ZOA twenty five dash two as zoning code amendment to the appeals provision within Title Eleven, Chapter Five, Section Four, Subsection Seven, and within Title Eleven, Chapter Five, Sub, Sub, Section Five, Subsection Three Point C.
Second. We have a motion, second discussion.
Madam Mayor, I, I can, I can kick things off. So I second in the motion. I'm, I support, I support the motion. It's, I've sort of been joking with myself because, as you've heard, I served for about six years on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And in that volunteer service, at almost every hearing, I think, I heard that I had no expertise, that I'm in the pockets of developers, that I should not have any authority because I'm not elected and can be held accountable. So it's, so now I'm on council and I'm hearing that the Planning and Zoning Commission are the experts who deserve more authority. And I want to be clear that I'm so grateful for our Planning and Zoning Commission. It's a huge commitment and undertaking, no matter what expertise or professional experience you're bringing to that table. It requires many hours of dedication to our community. They're really just in it because they care about our community. When I was serving, I was frustrated because we applied, all we did was apply the development code. It was very black and white. It either worked or it didn't work within the code. And I didn't feel like we always made, I didn't think that always represented the best choice for the neighborhood sometimes. And that ultimately inspired me to run for City Council because I wanted to affect that development code that at planning and zoning, I only had the authority to apply. So here I am now in this position. And regardless- And regardless of any authority, final authority, when we receive the staff packet, that includes um, the transcript from any planning and zoning commission meeting. I immediately jumped to P and Z testimony because I want to read what they, what kinds of questions they asked, what came to their attention. Often that might include references to council about, you know, maybe they're asking for a variance and the commission is unclear what council's direction is on variances. Or maybe, um, I mean, there's all kinds of things where they, I mean, I've heard them, I've heard it said, this is above my pay grade, let's kick this over to council to make that final decision. And even in those hearings, that's very helpful because we are the policymakers. We are the ones on council who get to say, okay, this is, this is a group that deals with our development code every single week that they have meetings. And they are getting hung up on things. And so what can we make as, what can we do as policymakers that help to streamline that process and make things more clear for our residents and make things ultimately better for our neighborhoods? So I, to me, this is part of that. Not only has the city been operating as if this was already in effect. Um, and we've demonstrated, I think, that tonight in the projects referenced and um, in, and I can certainly say that from my own experience on both sides of that decision making process. But, but I, I, it has been painful since that decision was was determined that, um, we have had to approve things that aren't as best as they can be for the neighborhood. Um, and I want to, I, my commitment is to the neighbors. I mean, we are, somebody mentioned tonight that they're so frustrated. They're going to hold us accountable in the voting booth. That's what we're, that's what we do. That's what our, our system is built on. But when commissions are appointed and recommended by one person, you don't have that accountability to hold them to that standard. You don't have the opportunity even to dialogue with them about it. The commission doesn't have email addresses and websites that you can contact them. Um, it goes to the planning staff and then it's shuffled to the commission. But we are, I think all of us would meet with anybody, not to discuss an open application, because that would violate open meaning laws, but to discuss strategy to, I mean, like we, we are here for service and we are held accountable. And that's for those reasons, that's why I'm supporting, uh, the motion here tonight and for the reasons explained in the staff packet and the lengthy recent statement.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, um, first, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, the folks who are still here on this topic. And then even the folks who came and went and the folks who may be online. And then, uh, thank you to staff for the work that went into this. I know that this has been a lot of work and a lot of thought has been put to this by a lot of different people. To be honest, I'm a little sad. Sad just from some of the public testimony about what people think about me and what people think about other folks on council. I truly believe that there is not corruption. There's no evidence of corruption, like there isn't enough money to go around for there to be, you know, corruption. And so it's hard to hear that. And it's hard to hear that without anybody being able to say, here's the circumstance where I can demonstrate that that happened. It's hard for me to hear something that says planning and zoning was formed because, uh, to separate them from political donations. Well, certainly maybe that's an aspect that's a benefit, but was that why it was formed? I don't know that that's the case. I have no evidence that actually shows that's the thing. You know, accusations to the mayor about not finding a better location for Interfaith Sanctuary. I mean, the mayor, the mayor worked with so many folks trying to find alternate locations and trying to figure out where else these things might be. And in the end, one wasn't found. And in the end, it's a, it's a institution, a five oh one C three nonprofit that gets to make their own decisions. And if we mandated them to move to one place or wouldn't allow them to apply for another place, like that would be the definition of government overreach. And so we let them come through the application process. And so it, it hurts to hear some of these things because I think that so many of us try hard not to engage in those types of things that we're being accused of. I can understand the timing issue. I can understand the way that it looks. I don't love it either, but I don't always get to pick the timing. But I do know that later today, there's going to be another application and it's going to be an appeal. And it's going to be a tough decision because I think that if we had this proposal in place, we could make a stronger decision for all the parties that were involved with, instead of what we're, we're left with here. I, I just want to say a couple more things. One is there may be some doubt that we view our Planning and Zoning Commission as experts, and that is just absolutely not true. These are experts, some of them in land use, some of them in lived experience, some of them in transportation, some of them in the way that they grew up or where that they grew up or different things that they've seen. Everybody brings expertise to the table. And typically a decision gets better as it goes through multiple layers that can be viewed through multiple points of view. And I really see that as our function with planning and zoning. They make the best decision that they possibly can with the information that they have available. Counsel looks at that information as closely as we can. And then we make a decision in front of a live audience in a public setting so that there aren't conversations going on behind scenes. This is the only place that that happens. Any other corporation that you worked for, a family event, you would have multiple conversations, you would yell at each other, you'd put post-it notes up on the wall, you would negotiate, you do all sorts of things until you came to the best decision possible. We can't do that because we have to do that in front of everybody. So we do it through layers. We do it from the staff working with the applicant, the staff working with planning and zoning, us looking to see what planning and zoning does, and then it comes our way. And again, in a small period of time, we make these really large decisions and we do our best to get them right. And I think most of the time, those extra layers do make those decisions stronger, maybe not perfect, but better. And I think that that's always my goal is how can we make things a little bit better? And I want to make sure that we do not discount the expertise that our planning and zoning has. That should not be, um, how this decision and how this vote, I think, the way that it will go, that should not be how it's interpreted. If nothing else, it should mean that we are listening and looking at every single thing that they're doing, taking that into account and still figuring out ways where we can strengthen their decision or explore areas that they did not feel comfortable exploring. So again, I'm, I'm a little bit sad because I think that this conversation gets pointed to a lot of things that don't actually happen. And I do think that the goal of every single city council member up here and the goal of our mayor is to make the process stronger for our community and stronger for our citizens. And I think that that's why we're making this decision. And that's why I think it's hard to hear people speaking in conflict with that. And again, I don't, I understand how maybe people view things in a different way and that's okay. There's not always going to be agreement. But I'm not going to lie that it hurts, um, when I hear things that I try so hard to fight against on a regular basis and do so much to try to make sure that we have a good process for our citizens.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. I'll be supporting the motion tonight and I first want to thank everyone for coming out here tonight and for providing that written testimony ahead of time or for addressing it over the phone. Really having these kind of process and the open meetings, um, it makes for a better decision, right? And it makes us a stronger community from hearing from more people on what's working and way, and what needs to be changed. Um, our Supreme Court recently made a decision in which they made clear that the process we had been using and by conditioning some developments is not within, was really not the way we had it written in code and it needed to be changed. And that's what we're doing here. Um, this change is not about Interfaith Sanctuary. This change is about the appeal process for us to build a more robust project by hearing as much testimony as we can from the public uh, through a de novo review and from considering new information and from looking at the same information, seeing how can we enhance this project? I'm really extremely grateful for our Planning and Zoning Commission members. They are some of the most thoughtful and rigorous people who are making decisions within the city. This change in no way diminishes their authority, nor can it take away from their expertise. We are very thankful for their service to our city and to our entire community. Um, and, and I just want to address one of the, some of the comments that came up saying that you, council may be out there to be self-serving. That we're making decisions on a whim and that we're corrupt. And I'll echo what, um, councilmember Hallie Britton says, it is painful to hear that. But there is something you can do about that. If you, if you want to know the facts, people, go look at our campaign finance report. We have to report every penny that's donated to us and that's the way you can check. So, so I urge people who truly believe that to go look at those reports. And finally, just to remember that the reason with this de novo review process, we're going to bring in new information and we're going to be able to respond to the concerns of the community. Like we talked about with the electrical substation, there are many things we would have added to that. Uh, but there wasn't a major error that we could do, right? So we, we have to go with the information we had and I believe we could have made that project a little bit better. Um, and, and now we're going to have the opportunity to make that happen and make these projects be stronger with more eyes on the project, with more input on the project and more information that will have stronger developments and address the concerns of all the community. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank, uh, all the folks that came out, out tonight and all the folks that came to planning and zoning. I'm in a really unique position here, um, because I'm one of just two council members that, um, voted on this as a council and I voted against the Interfaith decision and the application, I should say. And at the time, I really appreciated the council's desire to try to mitigate impacts. But I believed then and I believe now that no amount of conditions, uh, could have protect, could protect the neighborhood. I think it's important to speak with candor and two things can be true. It is absolutely true that the reason that this changes before the council is because of the Supreme Court decision. That is true. It's in the record. Our system is based on checks and balances. Uh, the courts are the backstop to legislative and executive power. And the system worked and the court was clear. It said, Boise, you need to show your work and you can't amend planning and zoning. You don't, you don't have that authority. And so there had to be a change. So the other thing that can be true is that this is a better system and a better change for Boiseans. And here's what I like about this and, and others have mentioned this. I really like that this has more input. I've seen citizens come and spend their evening with us and not be allowed to speak because they missed a meeting. And that's wrong. I want citizens who take their time to come before city council to have the opportunity to testify, whether they missed a meeting or didn't send an email. If they are that vested that they come and sit here, I want them to be heard. And under the current system, that does not exist. The second thing that I like about this is more flexibility. And, uh, I've been frustrated when applicants, applications have come before council and we as a council can't listen to the people that have come before us. I think the battery, uh, battery, battery situation is a really good example of that. I wanted to condition that. I think it would have been a better outcome. I think the neighbors would have felt better. I think Idaho Power would have more transparency in what they were doing. The law would not allow that. Under this new ordinance, that could have happened. People could have been heard and it could have, and we could have reacted to what they said. So I know that this is, this is disappointing to a lot of folks who worked really hard to get to where they, they wanted to be on the shelter situation. But from a governance perspective, this is a better system and this is better for everyone because you'll have more input and there'll be more flexibility. And, um, I'll be voting yes tonight.
Madam Mayor. Thank you. First, I want to echo my councilmember colleagues' comments on planning and zoning. They're awesome. I, while I've only been on council for almost a year and a half, um, I've followed planning and zoning, uh, commissions for some time when Council Pro Tem was on there for that. And, uh, generally it, it's tough crowd. But I was appreciative of a lot of the respect that was shown them in the prior public hearing. They deserve it. They're rock stars. I, to be completely honest, only knew no one of the commissioners, you know, outside of, in, in normal life. Um, I saw Chairman Danley walking across the street downtown and I was like, that guy's awesome. Never talked to him, but I've, I've seen a lot of his really good work, right? Um, we on council get to benefit from every consent agenda. You saw it tonight too, some of the minutes we approve. Um, we review word by word, well, what happens in those hearings. And I am a subscriber to the City of Boise YouTube page. You should go like and subscribe as well. And I enjoyed listening to a lot of those live or recorded as well. There's a lot of really good work that happens in, in our Planning and Zoning Commission. I deeply appreciate them. I do believe that this is a continuation of the practice that we've had, uh, to be able to, um, do kind of what's mentioned over there, uh, do something a little better. There's always something we can do better. Um, and so I, I will be supporting this. I'd also just like to, um, respond to pretty much everyone's comments about this, the timing being suspect. You can take my word, the very first project I thought of when that Supreme Court decision was, was put together was the battery storage facility in my district because I had been following that project, uh, from when the very early documents hit our planning tracker, uh, development tracker, and I was getting feedback from neighbors as early as last October. Right? So I've been thinking about this project a lot. And the types of things, the mitigation, the concerns, and ultimately, um, in the end, when that decision hit, I knew that that would impact that project. And it was unfortunate, our, our neighbors didn't understand that until we, they came before us and we had to, to highlight that for them too. And there were literal tears shed, uh, because they knew that they wouldn't be able to impact that project. So when I think about this decision, as much of the feedback pointed to one project, um, I think we all thought of, uh, many projects that this impacts. And there will be many projects in the future that this would impact if we did not rectify it. I trust our legal team, our, our city staff, we've got great legal team here in the city of Boise, um, best in the state. They're looked to often as things change all the time for cities in the state. Really trust them and appreciate their help with this process. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Madam Mayor. Uh, if I could, um, I would just want to get on the record that the reason for my motion, for the reasons stated in the staff report, it was a wonderful professional report and presentation, Dana. So thank you for that. So I just want to reiterate. I just want to reiterate, uh, that that's included with my motion. I have a lot of thoughts on this. When the decision first came down, I sent it to all of council and I said, I need you to read this and I need you to read it within days. And, uh, the conversations that ensued. People were very concerned about the authority that they would have on decisions that intimately affected their district, like councilmember Morales said. And I could tell that council was very concerned about what authority they would have going forward if the code stayed as is. I, I can tell you as an elected official, both in the legislature and on council, one of the most frustrating things you feel is when someone comes to you with a very serious concern and you don't have authority to address it, but you could have that authority to address it. Like that is, that, that feels, uh, you, you want to be responsive to the needs and concerns of constituents. And I would say that extends to imposing conditions on low barrier shelters. Like, we want to be able to have that authority. And it's very difficult tonight to prove to, and prove a negative, uh, about what the motivation is for bringing this. And I, I would say council has the authority to make low barrier shelters by right in the zoning code. And that's not the amendment that you see today. We could bypass a hearing and the ability to put conditions on this, but that's not the amendment before you today. Uh, if we wanted to make it easier to build a low barrier shelter in this city, we have that authority. And we've been publicly lobbied to consider that when we passed the modern zoning code and we declined to do that. And I, I imagine we'll be lobbied in the future to make it easier to do things like that so that we don't have to go through what can be a very difficult public process. Feels a little awkward being, it felt like we were being held to account for decisions that several of us were, weren't involved in. We may be involved in the future and I understand the sensitivities around that. I want to speak a little bit to what I see as the purpose of planning and zoning. I, as I expressed in my back and forth with Deanna earlier, did a deep dive on Lupa after this decision came out and understood the bounds and contours of their authority. They are an extension and creation of council. Uh, they are there to, uh, in many ways, make that, make this job less burdensome and, um, make it easier for applicants to get those projects approved. And, uh, they exist by our creation. We can decide if they exist, what the bounds of their authority are, and they are an extension, in my opinion, of council's authority. And we can set those bounds. I also want to recognize what a tough job it is. Being on P and Z is like being on council but not being paid. And, uh, that is, that is tough. We have people here that have served on that. Um, it's a tough and thankless job and I can totally understand, um, why there was maybe some uncertainty on Planning and Zoning Commission about what the bounds of their authority should be. Uh, I think in a perfect world. Uh, I think in a perfect world, I, I would have taken an opportunity to, um, talk to them directly about that. We generally. Do not engage with members of P and Z to, uh, protect their independence. But I think it probably would have been appropriate in this circumstance when we're negotiating authority effectively. With what their authority is to, to give them some, some background. So they heard this testimony. Prior to making a decision to understand how much we appreciate them, uh, and lean on them in the decisions that we make. I also want to address who we appoint to planning and zoning. I do not view planning and zoning as technical experts at all. Some that may be confusing because sometimes we appoint people to planning and zoning with subject matter expertise. And we, maybe we've had a history recently of doing that more often than not. One of the reasons I like to do that is because. When staff presents something or a sophisticated applicant presents something. I want the people on that commission to have the confidence on day one to be able to interact, negotiate with staff and the applicant. Uh, on a pretty high level and not wait a couple of years before they feel comfortable doing that. And, but I view them as, as a citizen, as a citizen body. That, that are looking at this, not from the technical expertise that our staffers might have or a developer might have, but, but how the general public. Uh, might review this, but I do want them to have some subject outer expertise to be able to, um. Work on that with confidence. I want to say that I don't agree with, uh, Ms. Decker's assessment of our authority to oppose additional conditions, uh, under the existing code. My opinion on that is consistent with legal advice we've received from the city. I think under that rationale, uh, the decision in the Veterans Park Neighborhood Association would have gone. The other way because I felt like in that situation, uh, council addressed. Concerns that were brought by the neighborhood association that were unaddressed by. P and Z and those conditions did not stand. So I, I don't agree with the current, with that assessment of our current role. The. What I, my fundamental view about government, and this is something that comes a lot in our roles around like roads. Political mentor of mine and also, um, uh, was Grant Burgoyne, a former state senator. I was an intern for him. And he would often tell stories at his town hall about mayor of Chicago, uh, one winter he didn't plow the streets and the next election. They took him out of office. And he, he talked about like the responsiveness of that, having, when citizens have one neck to choke. They can make their voice heard. There's a level of accountability there, uh, that can be difficult when authority is delegated. Or, 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 um, not retained by the, by the, your elected officials at all. And that's something that really concerns me. It's concerned me with. With ACHD and it concerns me with the power and authority that we've delegated to P and Z prior to this. But finally, I just want to say that I, I don't think this is outside the bounds of. A, a normal process. This is something that's followed by a lot of our neighbors, including Ada County. Uh, and, uh, this is consistent with what I expect my, the power I expect my local officials to have. If there's a project that's approved that you like, you should be able to hold me accountable for that. If you don't like it, you should be able to help, hold me accountable for that. And I, I think that's what accountable government looks like. And I think that this change to the code, uh, reflects that expectation. So for those reasons. Uh, I'll be voting to pass this amendment. Thank you.
All right. I won't be voting, but I did want to thank everybody that's come this evening that's been involved and also give a thanks to the planning and zoning commission. I served on the P and Z for, I don't know, six years, seven years as a volunteer. I started in oh six. Was there till, um, 2011. We had many nights back in the day that would go until one or two in the morning. It is. I'm not going to call it thank, thankless work because it was really fulfilling and I deeply appreciate the service that planning and zoning members. Provide to this community. Um, and I appoint them from a variety of backgrounds, just like I was appointed. With a different background. I was interested in planning and zoning. I understood the, the impact these decisions had. Um, on the makeup of our community and the goals that we all had to be a safe and livable city. And wanted to be involved. And I had that opportunity and I, and we seek to give that same opportunity to residents from all different neighborhoods throughout the city. With all different backgrounds and they bring their life experience and their experiences, Boiseans. Um, to this dais on Mondays with a lot of passion, um, and commitment to the city. And I'm deeply grateful for it. Um, and appreciate the way, um, the two bodies work. I'm not together because we're independent bodies, but the, the work that we do, um, complements each other and is necessary and creates better outcomes in the long run. So. Um, thanks to each and every one of you up here for doing the work, um, and all of those commissioners. And many of whom have been willing to be reappointed, um, that continue to show up on Mondays. With the goal of making this place the best place it can be. Really appreciate it. Clerk.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Horliss.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right. Thank you. We will move now to the next item, the final item. Welcome everybody for the next part. David Mosher is the planner. Um, the appellant i- is the applicant. So I, I'm, who is representing Lombard? Is it Lombard folks? Is, I've got Scott Wendell. Or I see Matt Clifford listed here, but I don't see him in the room. So, um, whoever the, is representing the appellant is welcome to come up. We don't expect any neighborhood associations to be here. Let me know if that's not the case, cause then I'll call on you. Um, I've got three folks that are signed up. Are all three of these? Part of the applicant team or are they individuals? Great. Okay. We might be able to hear it all at once. Great. Okay. Thanks.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, I work at Ada County.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Accusing myself from this decision tonight.
You know what? I think that's a great idea and you should just go home and. Get ready for bed if you want to.
Thank you.
Don't feel like you need to stay and watch. Alrighty. We'll start with the city and then we'll jump right to you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The applicant is requesting to appeal the condition of approval number three associated with the conditional use permit, CUP twenty four dash zero 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 two eight. This condition of approval required thirty one electric vehicle or EV capable parking spaces be installed. The condition, conditional use modification application was for an expansion of illegal nonconforming use to increase the Ada County jail capacity as a phase project. The application also included a variance for, for surface drive and fire lane to approach into. The I one eighty four freeway setback and to waive required street improvements along Alamo Street. However, these variances were not appealed. The area is primarily comprised of a mix of uses from industrial, commercial and office. It is close to the Boise Town Square Mall and Associated Regional Activity Center, which is located to the west across the freeway. There are bus routes adjacent to the site, which includes a bus stop on Barrister Drive in front of the facility. And there is an ACHD level one and level two bike way to the east and west of the site respectively. In summary, the project is an expansion of the Ada County jail facility. Which would occur in two phases and the project was heard before the commission on November fourth, twenty twenty four and January sixth, twenty twenty five. The overall project includes the expansion of the parking lot and the landscaping in, within the northeast corner of the site. And the construction of a new housing pod with approximately three hundred beds, a ten thousand five hundred and sixty two square foot warehouse area. In a transportation handling area. After November fourth, twenty twenty four hearing. The planning is only commissioned her testimony from the planning team and the applicant. The planning team recommended approval with conditions that required installation of a hundred and thirty three EV parking spaces. And the installation of twenty three short term and fifty seven long term bike parking spaces. And the applicant expressed concerns with these conditions. And after hearing, the commission acknowledged the applicant's concerns and deferred the item to allow the applicant and the planning team to work together and find a compromise. As discussed within the project board, the applicant and the planning team determined that the required amount of parking should be based on the size and use of the proposed expansion. Using this method to calculate parking removed the need for parking reduction. And as such, on the January sixth, twenty five, twenty twenty five hearing. The planning team required thirty one capable EV spaces be provided and the applicant requested twenty twenty one. At the hearing itself, the applicant adjusted the request and proposed to install four fully installed EV parking spaces on site. The planning zoning considered the applicant's request, but agreed with the planning team and approved the project with the condition of approval requiring thirty one EV capable spaces. Along with the additional bike parking spaces, which the applicant agreed to. Therefore, the applicant submitted an appeal to remove condition of approval number three. The applicant's grounds for appeals that the number of EV parking spaces should be based on the number of parking spaces being physically installed on the site. And not the size or use of the proposed expansion. To address these grounds for the appeal, the. The Boise City Development Code states that all require all square footage based parking and loading requirements. Should be computed based on the gross floor area, the subject use and or structure. And to calculate EV parking table eleven four point ten in the zoning code requires the number of EV parking spaces to be determined. From the total number of parking spaces, which has consistently been assessed by utilizing the total number of parking spaces being required for the individual project based on its size and use. In this case, the proposed expansion includes fifty thousand three hundred and twelve square feet of jail related uses. And a ten thousand five hundred and sixty two square foot warehouse, which requires a hundred and fifty seven vehicle parking spaces and twenty percent of that would be thirty one capable, capable EV spaces. Therefore, the ground doesn't demonstrate an error, does not demonstrate an error with the commission. In addition, supporting memorandum was submitted to the city on March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, noting the requirements of House Bill number eighty six. However, the House Bill eighty six was passed after the planning and zoning commission made the decision and is not part of the record and is not a grounds for appeal. In addition, the planning, the House Bill eighty six. From the planning team's perspective, does not apply retroactively and therefore does not preempt the already adopted zoning code. In conclusion, the planning team recommends the council denied the appeal and uphold the planning zoning commission's decision with the condition. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, a couple of questions. Take that as a yes. So first, maybe just some definitions. I want to make sure that I'm clear on. So when we talk about EV capable spaces, I think we're talking about. Conduit and maybe it's hooked up for future wiring. Am I getting the gist of that for EV capable?
Madam Mayor, members of council, that is correct. Uh, EV capable is requires of infrastructure being placed. So that at such time when they do put the charger and all the infrastructures there to support it.
And then I noticed that later on, it talked about four EV full. Uh, spaces. Does that mean that like it actually has the infrastructure there at that point? So it's not just conduit and the wire. It's the actual like. I could plug my car into it when I roll in it.
Madam Mayor, members of council, that is correct. Full would be everything's there and ready to go.
Yep. So rather than doing twenty one capable spots, they came back and said, we're going to do four actual spots.
Madam Mayor, members of council, that's correct.
Okay, great. So some other confusion that I'm just trying to wrap my head around is. Planning and zoning, it seems like makes a pretty wise decision to say, go back and work with staff and compromise in good faith. And figure out some of this stuff. And, you know, there's a number of thirty one, but then eventually the applicant come backs, comes back and says twenty one. Um, this makes sense. This is how we figured out this information. And then from what I read, planning is always like, yes, we can see how you got to this information, um, to twenty one spaces. And there's maybe some sort of agreement that happens there that like. Yes, this is doable. And then I'm trying to figure out what changed and maybe this is a better question for the applicant. What changed between, hey, I think we arrived on twenty one spaces to, um, coming to the hearing and all of a sudden it being four?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I don't know exactly what, uh, changed with the applicant and why they came back with a different proposal at the hearing. You'd have to ask them on that. I'm not aware.
So what changed for our staff then? So staff and our, uh, P and Z commissioners, because it seems like twenty one was a number that at some point we were kind of on board with. And then it looks like maybe it got bumped up to thirty one during the meeting.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the planning team had always recommended thirty one. Um, that's the, that's basis twenty percent of the amount of parking from the, the, from just the expansion and the uses, if you break them out. The, uh, the applicant was also implementing a different parking reduction standard that our code has. I think it's, uh, sectional eleven four eight point seven. And it's an additional parking reduction that applies to, uh, mixed use projects. So we can lower parking for, uh, true mixed use projects. The planning team didn't think that was. An appropriate use of that standard, um, since this isn't really a mixed use project. There's a mix of uses, but they're all, um, part. And required for the operation of just the facility, the Ada County facility. So when we're thinking mixed use, we're thinking like a traditional mixed use development with commercial on the ground floor and, or, and residential on top, that type of thing. And with, which this is not, this is all a, a facility, Ada County facility, jail facility, public safety facility. So we didn't think the application of that standard was appropriate and therefore we still stuck with the thirty one.
Yep. Yeah. So just to maybe paraphrase there, um, in our council packet, they came back and said, say. We think twenty one's the right number. You basically say, we see how you got that number, but we think you're interpreting the code just a little bit wrong because of multifamily. The number is actually thirty one.
Madam Mayor, uh, members of the council, that is correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Sir, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, members of the city council. My name is Amon Taylor. At two hundred West Front Street, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven zero two, here representing Ada County. Maybe just to, to address some of the questions from council member Hallie Burton initially. We did get instruction from P and Z to go back and have discussions with staff. Really appreciate the, the work that they've gone to, to. Try to come to a resolution. This was a complex. Application for a number of reasons. And in particular, I think this requirement that was being imposed to a. Major expansion that had existing parking and how to deal with the requirements. And so. I think that was a, a new, unique issue for all of the parties involved. Maybe just to explain how the progression occurred in terms of the numbers. We, we started with a pre-application meeting. Uh, I think discussions there indicated that we probably need to do twenty percent of the new parking. That was, I think, reflected in the notes that were circulated after that, which would have been. About four spots since we had approximately twenty new parking spaces that would be built as part of this major expansion. And so. The design team with, um, Ada County representatives started to look at. The preliminary design to see where that would make sense, identified eight, about eight spots. Total where they were going to use block heaters for vehicles there at the jail that could also double as conduit for EV charging stations. Then in advance of the November fourth, P and Z hearing, the first one, uh, we received a staff report with the recommendation of a hundred and thirty three EV capable spots. Which came to be, it is a surprise to the county and, uh, triggered our objection. At that hearing, um, planning and zoning, I think, acknowledged some of our concerns from the county perspective. And, uh, instructed us to, um, communicate with staff and try to come to some resolution and they tabled the matter. Those discussions is, uh, was indicated by Mr. Moser, uh, included. A review of the code to try to find something with the confines of the code. I think just like the city. At the county, we're, we're comfortable with the idea that we have to find something that works with the code. We can't just. Completely abandon it to come to some resolution. There's has to be some integrity in that process. And so we suggested some potential approaches, um, a- as you noted, and the number of twenty one was suggested. Again, this was in back and forth in discussions. Got a response of thirty one. It was still a, a little too much for the county in the terms of that was still quite a bit, ways beyond the new spots that we'd be putting in. As you may know, one of the ideas and, and there's been a lot of discussion about it, I think with some of the recent legislation is the ideas. Building these, um, capable spots in the infrastructure makes a lot of sense when you're doing it initially as opposed to retrofitting. And so we were still going to be required to do a significant amount of retrofitting with the thirty one. And so the thought was, well, maybe we know this has been an ongoing discussion about, well, what does the code actually require evidence by? At one point we thought four, then we're all the way over here at one thirty three, then thirty one. Is there some way we can come back to? Four, and instead of just putting the conduit in, maybe we'll create something that can be usable right away. Cause what was acknowledged. At P and Z, I think is that there's not really a, a mechanism in the code that would require. The progression from EV capable all the way to EV installed. And so from the county's perspective, it made sense. Well, let's just move forward. It, it, in terms of getting something that the public could use and it's a usable resource, uh, for purposes of, of the EV requirement. So that's kind of how it, it progressed to, to answer that question. Um, today to. Just want to focus my comments on, um, an issue that I think is arisen as a result of legislation in, in House Bill eighty six. I recognize that in, in the code, there are some limitations on what can be presented to city council in terms of evidence, memoranda. The types of things that create a record that would be used to make a decision. In submitting that, um. Information on the legislation, the intent was to just provide notification of supplemental authority that came up. So. So we heard from Mr. Wardle in the last. so we heard from Mr. Wardle in the last round of, of decision-making, that appellate standard that was imposed into the code is akin to what is required under law for appellate decisions when an appellate body hears something. And even in those cases where there's a very tight limitation on what can be heard, there's still an opportunity when I do appeals in front of appellate courts to provide notices of supplemental authority. Because I'm not creating new record, I'm just alerting the body who's deciding the appeal of the existing law as it stands at the time they're making a decision. And so that's important for them to be aware of that. I realize you were probably aware of it already, but I thought it was important and the county thought it was important to provide that information to city council when they were considering the appeal, especially since it's the county's position that that legislation has a significant impact on this particular condition in the CUP. As staff acknowledged and noted in their memoranda, there are certain limited circumstances in which the city council under the code, as it existed at the time that we submitted the application, can modify a CUP decision from planning and zoning. One of those situations is when the decision itself violates state or federal law. And in which case, under the code, city council can modify the decision in order to bring the decision into conformance with the existing law at that time. And so our position from the county side is that House Bill eighty-six and its language, which prohibits the adoption of regulations that would require requirements of EV infrastructure and building plans. And that also states that it supersedes existing local laws, regulations, orders and rules that require that same EV, EV infrastructure and building plans is a prohibition on this condition. So even, even if we were to say, okay, we'll put in the condition now, based on the timing. The problem is that down the road, we're not done. We still have city approval processes that have to take place with this particular project. We have design review that still has to take place and which is a, a decision that's made by the city. And we also have permitting, building permit applications that have to come in, which is where the actual building plans will be presented in their full set for review and approval, which have their own processes. All of those are going to happen in the future. So the challenge is if the condition is left in, then the county is in the position where they're going to have requirements imposed in later decisions by the city that would require the EV infrastructure, that, that being a prohibited action under the new House Bill eighty-six. So as a result, the county would respectfully request that this issue be taken care of now and have that condition removed from the CUP so that it doesn't create any issues in terms of violating state law through this additional process that will occur with the project. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Mr. Taylor, are you done with your comments?
For now, yeah.
Mr. Taylor, thank you for your, for this. I agree with your assessment that our code, there's not a mechanism to get from EV capable to EV ready. My question is, if, if council were to find that there was an error in the decision made by planning and zoning, would the county consent to four EV ready chargers?
I think as it stands, we would say that the, the legislation, the new state law wouldn't allow that to be a condition imposed in.
Fair enough.
And I don't, I don't have authority right now from my client. I guess if you're asking me to agree to something through this, this process, I don't have authority from my client to consent or agree to that in this, in this hearing.
Would you agree that that's prior, that's prior been, previously been proposed by your client?
Correct. I had authority at the time at that hearing to make that offer. The offer was made at that time.
Madam Mayor, I've got more questions. Yeah, if you're done. How long is the, so this is second phase. Are we in second phase now of this development application? Are we still in first phase?
Councilmember Halliburton, it's first phase.
Okay, we're still in first phase, but there's two phases.
Yeah. And maybe just to clarify that the CUP that was submitted was for both phases.
Both phases, great.
The first phase is what would be anticipated in the coming year.
Yeah, I know this been deferred once. So, and I think it was maybe a thirty-day deferral. Maybe it's been deferred twice. How, when did the application process start for you?
Oh, I don't, I don't know the exact date. I know the pre-application meeting was in July of twenty twenty-four. I know the first P and Z hearing was.
Councilmember, it was only deferred for council once, and it was because we received late correspondence.
And then what there was maybe another deferral within planning and zoning to go back to staff and to do some negotiation?
Yeah. So November fourth was of two thousand and four was the first P and Z hearing, and then it was deferred to January sixth.
Okay. So at some point you had agreed upon twenty-one EV ready stations.
To clarify, we proposed twenty-one.
You proposed twenty-one.
To staff, correct.
And then staff said, we'd rather have you do thirty-one, but twenty-one was what you had proposed. How much does an EV ready station cost per parking spot? Do you have any idea?
I don't. I do. I, I don't know if it's permissible. We do have our electrical engineer here. Maybe they have some better information, at least in, in order of magnitude on that.
If somebody could give us an estimate and of what it costs per space, that'd be great. Because I can imagine if there's a hundred and thirty-one spaces, that's a pretty good chunk of change.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we did a preliminary estimate on behalf of Ada County during the course of this, this discussion. I can provide those estimates to you. I do not have them right off the top of my head at this point.
Yeah, no ballparks per space?
Ballparks were roughly in the, in the range of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars per.
Per space for just the conduit and the wire.
And, and that has to do with, with geography and, and considerations for the placement of these based upon the location of existing available infrastructure.
Is that, so is that because it's the retrofit piece?
Part of it, Madam Mayor, is, is due to the retrofit piece. We also include in our calculations an estimate for the increased capacity that is required to be built into the electrical infrastructure to be able to accommodate them. So a panel board that would normally be two hundred amps, as example, and we put twelve EV charging, I'm using a, a very vague number there. That's not part of any of the numbers that we discussed previously. If we put twelve EV chargers on that, that could raise the, the capacity of that panel board upwards of two hundred additional amps. So those numbers are included in that, in that factoring per stall in terms of the economic impact to the county.
And so I'm guessing that for a full installation, and maybe you just kind of said this, but for a full installation, it's going to be even more. So like the, the conduit, the EV ready is going to be cheaper than the actual full spots per spot.
Madam Mayor, councilman, could you rephrase that?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm imagining like from a, you know, I know that it's not always per spot because you have to do a, a bigger network. But I'm imagining from a per-spot perspective, if I'm making a spot EV ready and I'm putting in some conduit and I'm putting in some wiring to kind of get those things hooked up, that there is a cost to that. And I would also imagine that if I was doing a full EV, like ready to go, it's like plugged in, I could drive my car up there. I'm imagining in per-spot, that's going to cost quite a bit more.
Thank you for the clarification. EV capable in terms of the, the, the city's code does have a per-unit parking stall cost that includes the infrastructure as well as the capacity on the electrical system to be able to accommodate that. EV installed has an additional cost. And we would estimate the cost of the charging station amortized over two stalls. Usually you will have a, a station that can accommodate side-by-side stalls of roughly twelve thousand additional dollars, so six thousand dollars per stall to, to complete the package.
Great. All right. Let's thank you for that clarification. So then just some follow-up questions for you. Appreciate that. You may sit close just in case. All right. So I, I, I get some understanding of, hey, if we actually put in four of these right now, we can use these tomorrow. Hopefully that's a really good thing because there's people that are there that can use them. I also see some really, you know, large value of, hey, if there's twenty-one spots, and I'm just throwing twenty-one out there because that's the number that I think you brought up to our staff team, that in the future, you will install those as they're needed. So if you're getting a different set of, you know, of fleet cars and you have more electrical vehicle charging needs, like you will install those and it'll be nice and easy to do because it's already hooked up and ready to go. So it's future planning. And, and that really, it seems like is up to you on when you want to do that. So we, as a city, would never be dictating you have to do it. We're just saying that you have to put in the conduit so that in the future, if you wanted to, it's going to be nice and easy. You don't have to tear anything up. And we require that from everybody, but don't require them to actually put in the charging station itself. Does that make sense?
I think I understand the policy rationale, but behind the, the code provision, if that, if that's the question.
Yeah. And so I guess as a council member, I'm sitting here and I'm thinking, I would rather have twenty-one EV capable spots because I think at some point the future is going to influence you to actually put in all twenty-one spots. I think that that's probably where we see a lot of different things heading for a lot of different things. And if you were only putting in four, then it's going to be a whole lot of work for you to put in these additional spots. So I see like the reason why we're asking for things to be EV ready and not just EV full is because we know that investments in the future will dictate that. But we're not saying you have to spend any money on it. That's up to you, right?
So if the question, I think, I think there's still the requirement as to how many EV capable spots need to be put in. I mean, that, so, so there, there is some, some expense associated with it that is mandated by the requirement in the code. So I, I understand where you're coming from. But I think there's still, from a policy standpoint, I think there can be debates about it. I'm not, not necessarily interested in debating with city council about the propriety of the code provision as it was put in.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to say is that we're never requiring four full stations. We're only requiring EV ready stations. That's what's in our code. There isn't anything in the code that says that they have to be fully installed. And I think I'm interpreting our code correctly there. And so when you came back to us with four, came back with planning and zoning with four, it's like, that's not what the code is asking for. The code's actually, actually for these EV ready spots. What I'm sitting here thinking is that you came to our staff with, through negotiation and you said, hey, we think that twenty-one is, is doable. That's something that we have the ability to do. Now we're in a spot where, you know, planning and zoning has said thirty-one is kind of where we want to see. And then we're in this weird spot where now we're still viewing this appeal and having a hard time making decisions and potentially, you know, voting to deny the appeal and then going all the way back to the start from getting this going again. I mean, to me, it just seems like getting twenty-one of these EV stations in there, or thirty-one EV ready stations in there is a pretty easy way to keep moving forward with the application. Because I think that there's some differences in how we're viewing the Idaho's new law that's going forward. So I'm trying to figure out a way for you all to say, hey, we actually were on board with this at one time and we could be on board with it going forward and not having to start this whole process all the way over again, which I don't want our staff to do. I don't want us to do, and I don't want you have to do. So I'm trying to figure out what it is that you might be willing to do or able to do to allow this process to move forward. And it doesn't seem like, you know, four is the number that you brought forward originally.
And Mayor. Thank you so much. I have a couple of clarifying questions, and I understand that the cost is not precise. And, but if, if I heard you correctly, just to do the infrastructure is between fifteen thousand to twenty thousand per spot. And then to add the actual charger that would allow someone to charge a car would be about six thousand per spot. So about twenty-one thousand to twenty-six thousand per parking spot to be fully baked.
Madam Mayor, members of council, based upon my recollection of the estimate, that is, that is what our estimate is per stall.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then I have a question for Mr. Taylor. Could you explain the county's view on the new state law and whether they have to comply with the EV stations now that the state law has been passed? Can you give us more clarity on that?
To Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, our, the county's position is that the requirement cannot be enforceable for the project. And so that's why we're asking that it be removed as a condition. Because it would be, I, I mean, I guess there's a few different ways to skin it, I guess, in terms of a legal process or avenue. The thought is from, from an efficiency standpoint and to just try to get resolution as early as we can in the process to, to get some certainty to move forward with this project, which we feel is an important community project that implicates public safety, that we resolve it now and allow the city council as the final decision-making body for this process to do it. And we think that there's an avenue to do that, even under the code. I know there's some sensitivity to what your authority is based on the Idaho Supreme Court decision that was discussed earlier tonight. But with the provision in there about violation of state or federal law and the ability to bring a decision into conformance with the law that exists at the time that something becomes, comes before you, that you have the ability to do that and to resolve this issue.
Madam Mayor.
Oh.
I have a follow-up to that specifically. Thanks for, Taylor, we, I, I was just looking at the State of Idaho's legislation drafting manual. And it talks about emergency clauses being necessary if legislation needs to go into effect immediately and not July one. But it also states that if legislation is to be effective retroactively, a phrase expressing the retroactive effective date must be added to the emergency clause. House Bill eighty-six doesn't seem to have that retroactive clause. Is that something that you've considered in terms of your argument bringing that before us to find air?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Morales. Yes, and we don't contend that it is retroactive. We, our position is that the statute, as it's been passed now with the effective date of March eleventh, constitutes the law as it exists now. And so there's going to be, as I mentioned, future decisions that are made by the city through the permitting process and design review that are going to require imposition of, of these EV infrastructure requirements that will be subject to that law because then it exists. It's also the law now where the body before us today, the city council, can make decisions based on the law that exists today in terms of whether this condition will present an issue that will violate state law in the future, if it's actually enforced through this process.
Okay, so just to clarify, the CUP was approved by planning and zoning prior to this, but you're saying additional, and maybe you can be specific, is there a specific point in this application's journey in the future you're looking at that will be that official decision point that will not be able to comply with this law?
Well, yeah. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Morales. So the building permit applications where the actual building plans. So as I understand it, again, I, I won't be submitting the applications, but we go through the CUP process. Doesn't involve the full set of plans. We go through design review where your city is presented with concepts and things to make sure that it meets the design requirements and standards. But then we're going to actually have a full set of building plans, construction documents that will be submitted to the city that will be subject to certain requirements. And so at that point in time, a decision will have to be made of whether those are in compliance with the law, with prior requirements, all of those things. And so that that decision, if it were to involve requiring the EV infrastructure, would be violative of H Bill eighty-six.
Thank you. Is there anybody that's not part of the applicant team that's here to testify? Anybody online? All right. It's tired. It's, it's late, so I have to make sure I get this order correct. We now have rebuttal. What seems so silly? Because you were just up here. Are there any further questions for staff?
For staff or for the?
For staff.
For staff. I have some questions for staff. So I just-
Do we do that before the rebuttal? Do we do that before the rebuttal? I don't have the order on this page today. No, you hear that's last. Okay, I was wrong, sorry. We are going to hear from the appellant. Any issues you might want to rebut that came up in the hearing? Nope, all right.
I've got some questions for them too.
The I know I asked anybody from the county to come up if they wanted to. You done?
If you're asking if I'm reserving rebuttal, if there are things that come up with staff comments-
No, actually, you have to rebut, and then we close, and then they ask questions.
I'm not sure what I'm rebutting at this point.
Well, that's why I said this was kind of funny. I mean, normally in an appeal, you got lots of people up here, like you saw earlier, and then you get to get up and you get to address all those things. So if you have anything else you'd like to say, that's why I looked at you with a, and started, I mean, it's a serious process, but I asked if you wanted to rebut anything because nobody was here to testify, but this is just the regular appeal process.
No, I understand. Thank you.
If there's anything further you would like to say, you may say it right now. It's considered rebuttal.
Okay. I'm done. Thank you.
You're good.
Okay, and then I do have some questions.
Thank you.
Yep.
And now, do I-
To the, to the appellant.
Oh, you have questions for the appellant?
Yep, that's what I've been trying to say.
Oh, all right. Come on back up.
Yeah, I apologize. So I feel like what I hear you saying is that there is no amount of spaces that you would agree to in this process at this, at this point. Or is there an amount that you would agree to?
So just to clarify, the, so the plans that have been submitted, one of the things that's probably useful is we started down a concurrent process, as I understand it, with the city in terms of design review to try to expedite that process and also with CUP. That process is not finished. But those plans, after that pre-application meeting and the county becoming aware of the EV infrastructure requirement, currently include and contemplate conduit for eight spots. But, so from the beginning, that's what the county was looking at. And based on the communications, about 20% of the spots that were going to be constructed, which would have been four, that would more than have exceeded what was to be required. So I will say that those plans that have been submitted to design review that have that conduit as part of that plans are something that the county would continue and proceed with. We're not going to change what's been submitted for that purpose.
Yeah, but the condition that you're appealing has to do with the 31, is condition three, the 31 EV charging spaces capable spaces that are planned and zoning put on. So you are challenging that, and you're saying that that needs to be thrown out completely.
Correct.
I'm saying that I don't know if I feel comfortable doing that because I don't think that they made an error in the decision, and I don't agree with your interpretation of the state law. I'm trying to figure out, is there a number that you're going to do? Is it eight? Is it eight plus four that are fully installed? Is it 21, the number that you originally came up with? Is there a number that you are willing to commit to that makes it nice and easy to move forward?
So as of tonight, that, again, what I have authority for and we're committed to is what we have provided in terms of plans, which shows the eight with the conduit to it.
Eight with the conduit and the four, or the four is, this is a different conversation, just eight with the conduit?
That was an offer that was made, was not accepted. So just like any negotiation that occurs, the offer's made, it's not accepted, we go back.
Well, I'm glad I asked because a second ago, I didn't even hear the eight number of the conduit. So that was a new number for me at this point, and so that's helpful.
Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I'm going to repeat what I think I've heard for clarity. So there's a lot of different numbers going around. Planning, zoning said they wanted 31. Originally, the county said you, they could do 21. There was an offer to be made for four, but there's eight in the application. Is that correct?
Correct. So the, the application has conduit. It doesn't have the wiring in it in terms of being EV-capable. If I-
The answer to that question is no, because the offer was made to have four fully, like downstairs in the basement, you can charge your car. And now what is in the application is eight. The wire is hidden by a wall. In the future, they could set it up to charge your car. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to ensure that the county agrees that the eight, you would, you put in the wiring, but basically you view that you don't, because of state law, you would never have to actually hook them up.
So under the, under the state law, there is, there's no, as we read it and what was passed, there won't be any requirement down the line that we, at least from a local government standpoint, that we put it in. But the county, again, I mean, we have charging stations. We acknowledge that this is a thing that will be useful to the community at our facilities. Are looking at putting that stuff in. So if we put in the conduit and it's available and we can do that down the line, then that may be something that the county can do. But I can't say, yes, we're going to do it in all eight and we'll do it by this date. Because we may use that infrastructure for some other use or determine that there aren't resources or funding, or that's not the best use of taxpayer money to do that because we don't see a demand or a need there. So the eight, maybe just to clarify, that, that infrastructure was put in because of the need to use block heaters for the diesel vehicles there at the jail. But once we became aware of this, can, this requirement, potential requirement with the EV parking, then the design team started to look at where could we do that to meet that requirement? And this was a place that we could do that. And so that was what was submitted as a plan, that it would be conduit available to meet that requirement.
All right. Thank you very much. You have questions? Okay, thank you. All right, I'll let council ask staff members' questions before we wrap this up.
Madam Mayor, I just have one question. I just want to be crystal clear on our code's requirement. And the code's requirement is EV-capable spaces, not actually full spaces or spaces that aren't, we have a definition of what EV-capable is, and it doesn't even sound like the eight that they're talking about meets that definition. Perfect.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, yeah, the code requires EV-capable spaces. That's what needs to be installed, 20% of the of the required parking.
Perfect. Thank you for bringing that up.
Other questions? All right, I'm going to close public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move that the appeal of CUP 24-28 be denied in the decision of planning and zoning to approve a CUP for an expansion of the IDA County Jail located at 7210 West Barrister Drive on 22.36 acres within an MX3 and I-1 Light Industrial Zone be upheld subject to the following condition, that the county be required to install four EV-capable spaces, given that the Planning and Zoning Commission erred in their application of the EV standards in the code. Period.
Second, okay. We have a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor, if I could just speak to it.
Do you want, you want a reasoned statement or anything?
I would ask that staff return with a reasoned statement based on the, what you hear here. The, I reject the county's contention that the existing law applies retroactively. I would probably concede that I'm sure there's ways we could tie each other up and fight about this going forward. I would hope that that would not be a way that this is handled. I think it already probably looks kind of bad on us, how this has been dealt with publicly, both on the city and on the county's part, with numbers flying around everywhere. I'll just tell you, my, my experience with this is, we had Sheriff Clifford come here a couple of years ago to tell us all the problems with the jail, how its needs, it was built for the needs 50 years ago, and it's not meeting the standards that they expect to be today. I would like to see the jail that's built today meet our needs for the next 50 years. I don't think four spots is going to meet our needs for the next 50 years. Be that as it may, I would hope that the county views this as a good faith effort on the part of city council to resolve what has been a lengthy and unnecessary dispute, in my opinion. And I would hope that the plan submitted are a reflection of what will actually be built so that we can move forward with this and the county's needs can be met, while also the policy goals of city council and the city can be met. I want to say that I think there is an ambiguity in the code as to how many spaces are actually required here. I think staff appropriately resolved that ambiguity in favor of more EV-capable spaces, which was appropriate. And I think, even though I think planning and zoning aired in the application of that standard, that going forward, I would, I would hope that both staff and planning and zoning resolve errors, resolve ambiguities in favor of the policy goals of city council.
Madam Mayor, I really appreciate the motion. I don't think I have the ability to support it as stated. And there's a couple of things here. One, I want to acknowledge that, like, this is a really important project for our city and for our community. This is a project that needs to be done. It's a project that everybody wants to see move forward. It's also a project where you've worked really closely with our staff to find a pathway forward and actually arrived at your own number of 21 and said, this is the amount that we think that we would be able to do. And staff says, hey, like, we understand how you got there. We don't think it's quite right, the formula. And so like, I want to be here and give you the benefit of the doubt that like, maybe your formula wasn't quite right with what staff had, but it was still a formula that you came up with that made sense. And it's a number that you brought forward through that compromise of 21. And so I'm going to have a hard time accepting the motion for less than what they actually brought forward themselves to our staff with a calculation that they did themselves. So that's where I'm at the motion. If there was a willingness to amend it to 21, I would certainly be in favor of that motion. Otherwise, I would vote no, and if it didn't pass, would make a second one.
Yeah. Councilmember Howard, thank you for that. I've contemplated that. I've contemplated other numbers here. However, I think this can only be resolved. The reasons I asked, if the county on the record would be willing to consent to something that would be higher than four. I couldn't even get them to consent to four prior to learning in this hearing that eight are planned with some level of, some level of compliance with EV standards in the code. So I can't, within what I believe are the constraints of upholding the decision, but amending the condition, I can't find something in the code that would allow 21 spaces to be like an interpretation of, of the code. So what I, the reason we're going with four here is I think that there is a justifiable interpretation that the code would require for, based on evidence previously supported by the county's interpretation of an ambiguity.
Further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if there's no comments, just in response to that, I definitely respect that decision. I do disagree because I do think within the staff report, there's documentation, documentation of how they came up with 20, 21 spaces. Staff agreed with how they came up with that amount, but disagreed with the specific way that they did it because it was multifamily. So I do think that there is something that could be pointed at. And what I'm seeing here is an opportunity to say, hey, planning and zoning require 31. You actually brought forward 21. We don't necessarily agree with exactly how you got to that number, but we're willing to meet you there because of some of that ambiguity and because we have documentation of that number coming up with. So again, that's where I'm going to stay, but appreciate what you're, what you're saying.
Is there further discussion?
Madam Mayor, I think I, I definitely, a little bit on the middle on this one. I appreciate the motion. I think the, obviously, we just, prior public hearing, had a lot of conversation about where we're at at this point. And I think that, you know, my questions for the appellant centered around the very specific standard of review for appeal and that it violates state or federal law. You know, I, I think there's a lot of squishiness between the appellant's response, but I, I think that that at future points in this, this application process or this development process, there will be points for them to contend, for sure. And so, you know, I kind of see that as just further, further cost pain for, for our local residents, our taxpayers, those in our prison system. And so I think on that error point, I think I, I can see why we, we would modify this, this planning and zoning decision. So I think I, I think I'm leaning to approve the motion, but, but it's a tough one.
Madam Mayor, thanks to our county folks who spent the evening with us. This is very murky to me. We have a new law. We have several different numbers that have agreed upon. It's going to cost a fortune to do 31 of these spaces. And I'm concerned that we, under 31, we will be requiring taxpayers to pay for something that they may never use and that you may never install, based on the state law. So I think in this case, compromise is best. If the county said that they would do four full, and we can get the council to agree to that, I think that's going to be your best bet. Otherwise, the county's going to be stuck with 31, and it's going to cost everybody a lot of money. So I am going to vote for the motion.
Madam Mayor, if I could just add one further thing prior to a vote. Just piggybacking off my comments previously, the city and the county, the public expects us to work together well. We have big issues to tackle together. Homelessness, housing crisis, just, just tons of really salient issues to our community. And this is relatively small potatoes. And I, I hope that the decision tonight is a reflection of a good faith effort by city council to take a step forward in trying to be good partners in much bigger issues that we have to deal with over the next year and in the future.
All right, clerk?
Hallie Burton.
No.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Four in favor, one opposed. Motion carries.
All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Post, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.